9:03, when to call this Board of Supervisors to order. Can I get an invocation, Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes. So, Father, in the name of God, this, O God, the grace and favor of your people, thank you for allowing us to attend another board meeting, God. And, Father, we just ask, oh, God, that you look over your elected officials, God. Father, continue to protect them from any hurt, harm, or danger. Father, continue to give them wisdom, oh, God. And, Father, we just ask, oh, God, that you tend to bind them close together, that one may not fall far from the other. And, Father, we just continue to pray for this country. We pray for this state. We pray for this county. We pray for this city, oh, God. Father, continue to keep us close together, God. Father, we continue to pray for our first responders, our kids, our schoolteachers, and all the economic development that's coming to this county, oh, God. Father, we just ask, oh, God, that you make Adams County a beacon, oh, God, in this state, oh, God. Father, continue to let that love grow. And, Father, we want to pray for ones that may have lost loved ones, oh, God, over the past weeks. Father, we ask, oh, God, that you comfort the families, oh, God. And, Father, we just ask right now, in your precious Son Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the Father, to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, to this world, to which he has been, to one nation, and to all, in this world, with his great love.
I need a motion to approve the minutes. Moved by Mr. Cogan. Second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gray. Any discussion?
Mr. President, Paige, when can I, I'm still not able to see the attachments, exhibits, so, you know, when I have my eye going there.
It's with Devonte, so he can show you how to get into the drop off.
Oh, you showed him?
He said you were, everybody's on it.
It's in the drop off.
It's in the drop off. Any more discussion?
You want to show me how to do it, man, if you didn't drop it?
All right, all in favor? Any needs, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the document. Moved by Mr. Gaines. Seconded by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion?
There's a correction on the bill with levy phase four. It's supposed to be sixty percent of the amount requested, not the, not a hundred percent of it. I just told Chalky she can be sent a new check today on there, so approve it. It's only sixty percent.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any needs, motion carries. Need to approve the monthly financial reports for Adams County Sheriff's Office, Chancellor, Clerk, and Purchasing Report. Moved by Mr. Gaines.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor? Any needs, motion carries. Special presentations, if any. Any special presentations? County business. Tim Cotton is not here, I don't believe, so that brings to Mr. Burns.
Good morning, everybody. Unfortunately, it's that time of the year again. I emailed a copy of the proposal last week to Scott, Brandy, and Stephanie. I don't know if y'all have them still, but I brought more copies for everybody. Y'all weren't able to send them to them, but here are the renewal proposals.
There could be a test later.
Oh, yeah, got a few tests. I think the first thing that's in there are the actual loss runs of y'all's experience and claims. But anyway, the, of course, if you, you know, the recap of last year and this year, you can see that there was a pretty good increase in premium on the property line and the automobile line. There has not been a tremendous amount of property claim. There have been a good bit of automobile claims, and I think that's where that premium has increased, from the claims experience on the automobile. Property rates in general are a bit challenging right now, and not just for municipalities, but for everybody. And I think you're probably hearing a lot of the horror stories in the personal lines market, commercial lines, property markets. Reinsurance costs have just gone outside, and that's the insurance that insurance companies buy. But you can see that the grand total is gone from five eighty-four to six seventy-eight, total for everything. A couple of the highlights that we need to see are, y'all have had a straight ten thousand dollar deductible on property. This year, Travelers is saying they cannot do a straight ten thousand. They'll do a ten thousand dollar deductible, except for wind and hail. Wind and hail will now be a twenty-five thousand dollar deductible. Y'all have always had a two percent deductible for main storms, hurricanes, et cetera, et cetera. That's a two percent deductible. But those are probably the biggest changes from last year to this year. Now, one of the things that I was gonna mention to y'all, we can get y'all a deductible back to ten thousand if you wanted to, and it's called a deductible buyback. On y'all, that deductible buyback would be three thousand ninety-four dollars a year. I've always been a firm believer in higher deductibles, because you save that money, you save that money every year. You buy insurance for catastrophes, not for maintenance, or, you know, for small claims. And you just want to protect yourself from the large losses. But that's entirely up to y'all. The truth of the matter is, I think personally, y'all should consider, instead of a twenty-five thousand dollar deductible on wind and hail, I think y'all probably ought to consider a twenty-five thousand dollar deductible across the board. You know, you don't want to file a bunch of small claims. And actually, on y'all, if y'all go to a twenty-five thousand dollar deductible across the board, not just wind and hail, it would save y'all about twenty-five thousand dollars a year on your property premium. So that offsets a lot of that increase that you're talking about in premium over last year. It's twenty-four six sixty, to be exact. So, you know, that's one of the things that I think y'all ought to consider, not buying a deductible down, but actually increasing it across the board, and saving that twenty-five thousand dollars, twenty-four thousand dollars a year. But I've got in there that deductible buyback, if you want to see it, it's on the second page, and then I've got, you know, this is just a general overview of the quote. Y'all should have had a copy in there of your property locations and the schedule with the amount of property coverages. Also, I've included in there the list of the automobiles and the equipment. I think that y'all got four, five more automobiles than you did last year. Let me see real quick. Corbett and Stephanie have gone over the automobile schedules, the equipment schedules, and the property schedules, so they should be pretty well up to date. Y'all had a hundred twenty-five units last year and a hundred twenty-eight this year, so, you know, there's only three more units than last year. You know, something else that I was gonna mention that y'all might want to consider is eliminating the comprehensive collision on some of the older vehicles. You know, y'all got like eight or ten vehicles that y'all don't have a complete collision on. There's probably more than you probably should come off, because I was noticing some older ones that still had it on there, but, you know, that's just something you could consider to cut the premium down a little bit. There's overviews of all your coverages, the incidental coverages, the equipment coverages, the coverage that y'all, pretty much, everything's pretty much the same that it's been in the past, as far as the coverage that y'all purchased. You have some earthquake coverage, some flood coverage. Those usually have higher deductibles. You know, and also, the equip, I mean, the automobile, I mean, excuse me, the property coverage, a lot of that, the actual rain increase on the property is probably more like five percent, four and a half to five percent in actual rain increase. But they reviewed the coverages and they bumped the coverages up. They felt like several of the buildings, six or seven or eight of the buildings were way underinsured, so they've increased that by, you can see in the total coverages on the property, between six and seven million dollars. So you're actually getting a lot more property covered than you had last year to be in line with the values, and that accounted for a lot of the increase. But, you know, pretty much the increases were in the property section and the automobile section.
How many property claims we had last year?
I don't think y'all had any property claims. If they were, they were minimal. It's not just Adams County, it's, this is overall. I mean, I'm talking about everybody.
I was just thinking about the deductible.
Well, I can tell you right now, like I said, I'm a firm believer in the higher deductibles, and last year it would have cost y'all zero and saved y'all twenty-five thousand dollars. And, you know, you're talking about a difference of ten and twenty-five thousand dollars on the deduct, unless you're talking about a wind or hail, unless you're talking about no difference. And, you know, how many fires do y'all have? Is it mainly, it's gonna be a windstorm claim or hail? Oh, and one of the things that we have done in the past, and I want y'all to know that, and it's in the very back of the little pamphlet, we, every year or two, we reach out to Mason and the Supervisor Association and try to get a proposal from them, which we did this year because of the increases. Mason is not taking on any new subscribers or members in their insurance program, and they're doing a bunch of reworking right now, and I'm not real sure what that's all about, but they said they would get back to us when they decided they would allow any new members to come in.
Big other, we're just, that's a way of telling us they're not taking on us.
What's that?
I say that's just a way of telling us that they're not taking on us, because when I go to these conferences, I'm hearing something totally different from what you just said and all the people that they're trying to encourage to join this. I just, I just think what we got going on in Adams County don't fit what they trying to do, that just matters.
We looked at it last year, and they ended up getting just a little bit more expensive than Travelers, about ten thousand dollars more, and so we stuck with Travelers too. And that's probably why they don't want to, it's a very earnest process to get a quote from them, so.
It requires a lot, a lot of hours, a lot of applications, but, I mean, you know, money saved is money saved, but you've got two different avenues. Mason is a self-insured program as opposed to a fully insured program. Now, you know, they own a reinsurance company that does their reinsurance, and I'm sure they're probably going through the same things that all the other insurance companies are going through, but you're talking about fully insured as opposed to something that could likely or could possibly have an assessment. And, you know, if you, once you're in it, you're standing behind everybody, whether they're good, bad, or indifferent. But, you know, they, they're compacted, even if they are a self-insured program. But, yeah, I mean, when we looked at it the last time, there were, there were a few issues and it just wasn't a lot of savings. But anyway, I did stick the email in there that, that Renata, et cetera.
Yeah.
Yeah, that where she said, hey, we're not taking on any new people, just so that y'all knew that it wasn't really a hub service of luck.
Mr. President, Mr. Burns, on some of these, I don't know how many claims y'all received, especially on the area like Martin County Road and where it was messed up, people claiming that they blew out a tire, or messed up a rim, or whatever the case may be. Have y'all had any of those?
Yes, we do have some of those. There's a, there's a lot of things that the company will go through in their investigations. If the county knew that the damage exists, or the damage was there, and didn't take any step to prevent it, those kind of questions come up. And if you act in a prudent way, then they're gonna probably deny a claim. If you don't pay attention to it and say it'll deal with itself, there's a potential you might be liable.
So, my next question is this, have they paid any of the claims? Because every time I talk to somebody, even when I was with the city, they never, they never paid for them.
It's a, it's a high bar to meet, to make the city or the county liable for a damage to someone's rent.
Yeah, for the tort claims act, it's not just normal law and variety negligence, it's more than that. Like, the courts get special protections under the state law, potholes, for instance, you have to show that the county knew about it and didn't, also to show that it was non-discretionary type of decision, there's a mandatory fix. It's, it's not that easy, and that's because of the tort claims laws that exist, you know, unless that's what your keeps got.
And also, you know, with the tort claims act, I mean, there's a lot of things that y'all enjoy immunity from that are really surprising. I mean, you know, and one of the things that strikes me every time it happens, if you've got a sheriff, Patton's car is on a call, and it's on the way to an accident or a shooting or whatever, and they t-bone somebody.
Yeah, it's like looking at text messages instead of doing whatever, because he's checking his report or whatever, he gets immunity from that type of stuff, whereas you and I, not in our official capacity, can get that.
And under the tort claims act, y'all limited to five hundred dollars, unless you have more coverage than that, and then you're liable for whatever amount of coverage is.
I noticed some of these buildings, some for the airport and some for the port, if we could ask them, since it's a hundred thousand, give or take increase, we could ask them that they can cover their own buildings and reimburse us for their buildings, if y'all want to do that.
You, you talking about, if y'all willing, the twenty-five thousand dollar, rather than you talking about under seventy thousand dollars though, but that's certainly a possibility. One of the things that we've done for, well, several insurers of ours that have large property schedules, because once you get into it, just like right now, Travelers saying, hey, you've got these six, seven buildings that are underinsured by six million dollars, we need to increase those, because number one, we want to get the premium we're entitled to, because we have a place to cost coverage on our policies. But we hired a company called CBIZ, and they come out and they do a rather expensive evaluation of all your property, or private property, whatever the case may be. And they present you with a well-documented valuation of all the properties, and it's really expensive, and, you know, someone like y'all, I would estimate it would be a cost somewhere between six and eight thousand dollars a year. And it's a wonderful thing to have, but it can be a double-edged sword. You can know exactly what your buildings are worth, but then you may end up having to increase your property schedule by another twenty million dollars. Now, if your property to do with what you choose and not sharing it with the insurance company, it might not be something y'all want to do, but, you know, it's kind of like, better left unstirred, or do you really want to know?
Want to know, because you want to be adequately insured, don't you?
Absolutely.
How long you been with Trail?
You know, that's another thing.
No, no, the reason I'm asking this question, because all of a sudden, they found out that we have some buildings that was underinsured, and we been with them forever.
Yeah, you been with them a good while.
We didn't discover this?
Yeah, y'all been with them a good while, but they do these evaluations on the properties probably every two to three years, and they have a safety engineer that comes out and looks at your operations and, you know, makes recommendations on what might better serve y'all as far as being safety conscious and prevent claims. But, you know, it, this year was one of the years they did the evaluation. But, like I said, if we produce a document prepared by professionals that say, this building is not worth two million dollars, it's worth two hundred thousand, then you have something to argue with. But if you produce that same document that says that building's not worth two hundred thousand, it's worth two million, then, you know, you're gonna be increased. But, yeah, to answer your question, Ricky, y'all been with Trail for a long time. And honestly, I mean, you know, this isn't just the property insurance for the county, it's the, of course, all the individuals of the county, the sheriff department, it's the law enforcement liability, it's the whole chabane. And, you know, we try to go to all the markets that we can to be sure that we're getting the best bang for our dollars, for our clients. There's just not a whole lot of companies out there right now that are jumping up and down to bid on municipal businesses. There are some, but they're drawbacks. You know, there's one that's pretty competitive than the tag we side, but they won't write cards because of all the challenges in the property insurance. Travelers has pretty much got the whole package, and, you know, and they've been there through thick and thin.
Okay, Mr. Johnny, all these vehicles we got listed on here, some of them say they're worth twelve thousand dollars, fifteen thousand, we got a fully insured, and what does that cost per vehicle? Just, let's just take the first, the nineteen eighty-nine three-quarter ton pickup, and we're fully insuring that vehicle, which we're gonna get about three thousand dollars for if it totals out properly.
Well, y'all got, right now, right at six million dollars in physical damage coverage, and that's costing y'all seventy-three thousand dollars a year for all of them. And like I said, that's five point eight million dollars, right, six million dollars in coverage. So, I mean, I can get you an exact breakdown if you need, but.
Well, I'm just wondering if you, if we took, it looks like we could take about fifteen of these vehicles off of here and just have them insured just for liability.
I think that's an excellent idea.
And I just wondered what, how much that would save. Let's say everything from two thousand eighteen down just about, probably would, it's just probably foolish to, because what you would give us, what they would give us for a vehicle of that age.
Patrol cars, everything else.
Y'all need to stop wrecking those patrol cars.
I agree with you a hundred percent. I'm not really sure who is here wrecking them, but somebody is. Y'all lost, right, your own auto, it's about a hundred percent.
Do you have patrol cars older than two thousand eighteen?
Yes.
Okay.
How many?
Oh, you're talking about the chair.
Yes, we do. I don't know how many I've stopped my head, but like, all our spare cars are being used right now, because some of the rich, he's talking about right now, so I wouldn't change them patrol cars, but the vehicles that we use, they make this, yes, by all means, you can do that on those, but.
Are any of these on this list, like blown-up motors and stuff sitting in yards somewhere? I know we had that problem a couple years ago, so we don't have any like that.
Mr. President, anything on this list that we paying insurance on is not moving, just just sitting up?
And that's what I'm telling you, we don't have a single vehicle right now that we're not using because of breaks, like we can pull and stuff. We had at one point, we had three spares, and all those spares are being used, plus, you know, it was a red light.
Okay, y'all, we're just saying.
Now we got people sharing cars that aren't patrol cars. I'm just saying, patrol cars, the maintenance vehicles, if you want to do that, that's a sensible.
Well, I'd just like to see what the savings would be, and I know you can't do that right now, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I'll have to run back and figure it out, but I ain't get that part, that's not a problem.
Does this have, are you just handing this to us today, or this to be approved today?
No, no, it just doesn't, oh, and that's another thing I want to say, thank you for bringing that up. This year, Stephanie, Brandy's office, Paige, Corbett, did a real good job giving us all the information early. Last year was a problem, because we came up, the week before, everything renewed, and said, hey, we're under a time crunch, this rebuild don't come up until next month. So we were able to get everything early this year, get y'all the proposals as of last week, and gives us time to take a breath. So, I mean, you give me a parameter, two thousand inception back, and I'll let you know how much the savings would be.
You got anything over, two thousand twelve further back?
Our cars?
Yes.
I'm sure we do. I just have.
Scott, we need to know so we can tell, tell him what the, what the variables are as far as what we're gonna maybe take off the insurance on, full coverage.
We can deal with Mr. Burns and go through that whole list with him and tell him what we use.
Okay.
But I just know off the top of my head, without even looking at the list, we don't have any vehicles that you can get because of breaks.
How many cars y'all got now?
After we sold them, I really don't know, and I have to get y'all, I can, I don't, we won't take them home by now. By the time I get up to speak, we'd have it answered.
All right, Mr. Burns, do you have anything else?
Chair. Chair.
Yes.
It would be still good to get with him, just to make sure, go over that list just to make sure that we don't have anything on there that we don't have.
Oh, yeah.
We should go through them, but the thing is, right now, they have vehicles that's ready to go to auction, and we cannot take them off, off them and do all that, until they've been sold.
But they don't need collision on them?
No, they don't need collision on them, but we.
But we need to know that, we need to know the vehicles.
As long as they're in our position.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we don't have anything on there that should be on there.
We should have like fifteen.
Yeah, we, we got a lot.
I bet it's like fifteen that they have that's gonna come off.
Yeah, we, after we talked to y'all last time, y'all said, get rid of whatever, ain't working, we went through that whole list again. I just didn't know this was coming up, it was more of, otherwise I would have brought it up. But we'll get that list for y'all and tell y'all what's everyone with Mr. Burns, too. Far as patrol car wise, though, I know we don't have any, because it's the last spare we had, you know, it's headed to the shop now.
That's something you probably need to do also with the road department, because sometimes stuff is still on there.
I'm on, we've sold already, so.
We just got to make sure everything's off that list, because that's the one.
Like I said, y'all got a hundred twenty-eight units all towed, and out of that hundred twenty-eight units, I think y'all have eight that are not full covered, so the vast majority of them are full covered.
We just need to look into that a little harder.
What's that?
We just need to look into that a little harder, see which one, we just need to have liability.
Because there's money you're spending that, you know, is not missing.
Okay, anything else you need to tell us today?
Nope, that's it. I wish it was better news, but, you know, in the market we're in today, it's, it's good news that we have everything here.
Yeah, it's cheaper than I expected, really, after some of the insurance increases I've seen lately.
I tell you, you know, I'm sure y'all see it as a move, there's been some harsh over, and markets leaving left and right, markets pulling out of state, you know, I feel for the people in Florida, people in California, I mean, you know, you got people like State Farm and Allstate that are just pulling out of states, and it creates a havoc in market.
We're slowly starting to get into tornado alley ourselves, it used to just be a certain swath, like Texas, Oklahoma, Kansas, and Arkansas, now they're, they're all over the country.
One of the things that we have always had was the cutoff line for hurricanes was I-10, and anything below I-10 was tough, you know, went deductibles of two percent, whatever, and we never were in that, but now, you know, we've crept into that.
All right, we appreciate it.
Well, I thank y'all, we appreciate y'all's business, and I'll get with Travis about the automobiles.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Thank y'all, I appreciate y'all's help as always.
All right, Mr. Cotton?
Yes.
You're up.
Thank you. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the board. How are y'all? I simply have an amended order on the appointment and salary of Victims Assistance Coordinator that required to be spread across the minutes. And may it please, the board, I would just present it in its respective form. I would assume that the board does have a copy of it. It just says, as required by Mississippi Code ninety-nine thirty-six seven, and begin January second, you should say two thousand and twenty-five, the appointment and salary of Sarah Delaney as the Victims Assistance Coordinator was approved and concurred by the court, as required by Mississippi Code, Section ninety-nine thirty-six seven, and twenty-five thirty-one ten, the salary of Sarah Delaney was set by the District Attorney, and was conferred with by the court at sixty-three thousand five hundred per annum, payable monthly with all monuments and entitlements as provided by county employees in addition thereto, the salary and the health insurance, and prorated amongst the four counties of the sixth Circuit Court District based upon population and caseload. That is reflected Adams County having forty-seven percent, Admit County nineteen percent, Franklin County fifteen percent, and Wilkinson County nineteen percent. When we took office, and the reason why it's coming up now is I want to make sure it was approved at the expiration. was approved, uh, at the expiration of our first year, which would be January the second, going to effect January the second of this next year, uh, but trying to get it in, uh, ahead of time, which seems it, it makes it a little bit late, but, uh, nevertheless, the salary is set by, by state statute. When we came here, we did not set it as high as the statute allowed, uh, but I'm asking that it be set, uh, now to reflect the, the state statute and created by the board.
What is it?
Sixty-three thousand five hundred dollars. Adams County's reflection share would be twenty-nine eighty-four five.
Is that a copy of it in your hand?
I did.
Was that the reason? We had the reason, but we sent it back, check with Stephanie, uh, you remember looking at that?
For, for this fiscal year, it's not an election, you actually can move the money out of one line onto the other and then for, for next. I mean, it was what, fifty-eight thousand before, so it's not a, it's not a drastic increase.
Fifty-nine five before, I believe.
And they're spreading it, we're paying like half of that cost. What we did do, what we did, it was good that it came before us, because no one was paying us for, we're paying health insurance and no one pays for that, and so I asked the judge to amend the order so that we get compensated, our share back for the health insurance, it was about six grand too, so actually probably net, well, that's not wash, we'll net some money, because the increase really wasn't that much.
Okay, I need a motion.
We don't even have a choice for this, it's the circuit judge sets it.
Move, uh, Mr. Littler, second by Ms. Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. President. How many excuse?
Yes, sir, thank you. All right, city government business, if any. Departmental reports.
Yeah.
Scott. Uh, just tell them that we had a pre-construction meeting on Morgantown that's due with the city government, and, uh, still have a few more things to be worked out, uh, but it's not a deadline date, but we are shooting, uh, getting our paperwork in line, they are shooting for maybe October the first, being, uh, start of day of construction. I just wanted to let you know we on that, so that's gonna be the, we have a pre-construction meeting on Monday last week. I just wanted to get a...
Everybody's been asking, so...
Yeah.
Get some targeting, yeah.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Uh, did, did, did they ask Scott to write the residence a letter, uh, to let them know that energy will be doing?
What, what'd they say, Rob?
Some tree removal, and I got a text, uh, from Tim Reynolds, you know, I went and met him, I got it from him and Bill about the money they wanted to charge, and asking should they send an invoice to the county. I didn't respond, I was on bed, Scott, I just pulled it up on my hand, Scott let him look at it, but they, they don't wanna budge on that, uh, for being responsible, keeping it back to the fifteen foot off of the main lines or whatever.
Scott, the problem of this, man, uh, energy's supposed to maintain the right of way anyway, and, and, and seem like they, uh, to my understanding, trying to charge us for something that they're supposed to be doing anyway.
Okay.
Is that not correct, Rob?
Yes, and after I spoke with him, he, um, he told me what it was supposed to be off the lines, and then the O-shoe, you gotta be ten foot, you know, back from that, so if they're fourteen, fifteen foot, we're off their lines to remove it, but, uh, they don't wanna get theirs back to that on this regular basis, any people front yard, so they worry about the people complaining, rapping about it, so they'd like for Scott to send off residence a letter of what?
Uh, Mr. President, my only, my only problem concerning is, and, uh, I, I've talked to some people in other areas, I just wanna make sure that, uh, what they're doing down here, they're consistent in other areas, is doing the same thing in other areas, is just not, uh, doing us like they're down here, because they have a responsibility to, uh, maintain right of ways too, uh, I just don't think they need to be charging us all this money, so I, I just think we need to look into it.
Are any of these trades on our right of way that we already have taken in? I know that some of Atlanta, I'm probably gonna throw a fit about it, but it's like, it's on our, on our property.
Yeah, and I was gonna say, well, it's not gonna be in additional cost or nothing, even if we have to pay, because it's already, it's been set aside, uh, with contingency, so it's not gonna, it kinda not come over anymore money to get it moved, but it is something to look at, uh, so definitely Scott just look into it, what they, you know, what, what it is saying. Any other thoughts?
All right, all right, go ahead.
Good morning, Lord President, Mr. Wilson, and General Supervisor, I'm Mary Hughes, Adams County Assessment Assessor. I would like to bring this to the attention of the, the certificate of amendment for the Department of Revenue, uh, this is typically from the Department of Revenue that's been received for the county, for the assessment, uh, recap for real and personal assessment, uh, the recap for two thousand twenty-four to investment knowledge and relief, substantial cooperation, and substantial real world reflection, and constitutional amendment. Mary Hughes, Adams County Assessor, said county does not any fault with respect to making and filling the seed assessment goal, and the board supervisor made this discretion add and allow to pay the salary of state assessment. And this was done in honor of the nineteenth, by the Department of Revenue. So I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention as for the assessment. And something else I wanted to bring too...
Hold up, we, we need to spread that across the minutes. All right, any motion? Move by Mr. Gaines, second by Ms. Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names? Motion carries, okay.
All right, something else I want to bring to the board's attention too, the application certificate for Adams County of fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, for authorities to expand the one here according to section twenty-seven thirty-nine, two, three, nine. This is a contract for a transfer of the settlement. Uh, we're also doing a contract for, have appraisal service, which, and we have one from Mr. Peggy Hitchwood. And we have another contract too. So, that's right, that's, that's all the contracts we have, it'll be swan across the members, but one here.
Okay, we need a motion to spread those across the minutes.
So, move.
Move by Mr. Gray, second by Ms. Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carries, okay. Thanks, Mr. Gray.
Well, Mr. President, uh, I don't know whose responsibility this is, but, you know, we got this Adams County, uh, get where we look up properties, and I'm gonna use a perfect example, if an individual, uh, sell their property and, uh, they got on here, this thing been updated nine, three, two thousand and twenty-four, so this individual done sold their property, and the property been sold almost two years, but they still got this individual down as owning the property. So, what I'm trying to say is this, this individual was a senior citizen, so they was tax exempt, so once they sold their property to somebody else that's not tax exempt, are we losing taxes on this property because, uh, it's still in this, this senior citizen name?
It depends, if the, just because the glide system doesn't pick it up, doesn't mean that the tax assessor's office didn't miss it. Tax assessor's office is supposed to be reviewing deeds that are signed and so forth as they come in and updating their taxes system, and then the...
So, I need to later on give Mr. Hughes and make sure that...
Make sure there's tax part that's updated.
Okay.
You seeing this on the portal? That what you're, okay.
They didn't say it's updated, it was updated nine, three, two thousand and four, that made me think that the portal was updated.
Two thousand twenty-four.
Twenty-four? That's what it says.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, departmental reports, who's next?
Morning.
Morning.
Morning, this way is reporting for Adams County, nine-one-one dispatchers. We have our calls for service, not just, uh, the next police department is at one thousand three hundred and twenty-seven calls, the sheriff's department is at four hundred and seventy-eight calls, the fire, it has thirty-eight, and for the county, it's twenty-eight.
Okay.
Also have three requests for travel, uh, for a nine-one-one, Mississippi nine-one-one conference for October the twenty-eighth through the thirty-first for Trish and Rice, and it fails, and myself, morning, this way.
And it fails. Trish and Rice. Marlon's way. Okay, who moved, who was motioned by, uh, Ms. Hutchins, second by Mr. Gaines? Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names? Motion carries. I appreciate it.
Good morning, morning. Lynette Smith, software's planning. Um, the Adams County Board of Supervisors apply for USDA grant funding for the safe room showers. This was in conjunction with Mema's funding of twenty-five thousand, Mema's funding has already been received, and construction has already began. I sent the emails to everyone, letting you all know that USDA is almost complete with their review, however, additional information has been requested. Um, one of the items that USDA is requesting is a PAR, P-A-R, architectural document, and this is now required for construction documents, uh, for construction projects, I'm sorry. And I discussed these options, um, with Attorney Sover, as well as Mr. Bradford, um, I would need to know what the pleasure is for the board in moving forward with this grant, um, opportunity. This will, will already set us back some, some ways on additional review for USDA, um, the USDA request was for thirty-four thousand dollars, if the county matched a three thousand. Uh, like I said a few minutes ago, Mema has already contributed twenty-five thousand. The PAR documentation, architecture, I don't know if the county has an architect on staff or what have you, but these documents will, like I said, are time consuming, and I'm under the impression that this is a time, uh, sensitive project due to meaningless regulations, am I correct? Um, so I would like to know what the pleasure is for the board in proceeding with this grant request, or would you like to withdraw the application?
Are you saying they'll shut the project down or slow it down, or...
Probably make it more expensive too, because you're gonna have an architect that'll cost like eight, twelve percent.
Correct, so you kind of pay the architect to do the documents, uh, they have to take more time.
Did we skip Mema already? Didn't we get Mema fund, funding?
Yes, already had Mema's funding, construction has already begun. And what is our cost? The total cost would be thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, total cost county match without USDA, thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. So, you, you go spend more than that.
We're gonna take that up, Brad, but...
Another requirement, uh, additional, I'm sorry, another additional, um, request from USDA was a certification statement from the Build America by America Act, along with updated budget information, um, operating budget information, and audits.
Okay, I guess I'll request you to work from work. How much money was that grant for?
It was...
It was gonna be...
It was gonna pay thirty-four thousand for US, from USDA, and then the county would have to match three thousand, but if we withdraw the application, the total amount that the county will be paying is thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And construction has already began, uh, I went by the site last week and saw this concrete slab and the, uh, the frame here. And I know, what is, what is the meaningless, uh, timeframe this?
We need to have it completed by a year, because, uh, it's, it's part of our regulatory program.
By when?
From a year from they gave us the check.
Okay, which was?
Uh, June, yeah.
So we have, uh, eight, eight more months or seven, nine?
And it can take USDA that long to, after they receive the additional information they're requesting to complete their review.
Any other avenues of, uh, funding that?
None of them were.
Uh, what's the pleasure, the board?
I'm trying to figure out what's the worst case scenario on this, if they, they run out and don't get it no way, I mean, we're gonna have to pay it anyway, right?
Correct.
We'll pay the architectural fees if we have to, we have, everything we put into the grant, we have to pay for, and then they'll pay us back if we get it, if we don't, we lose it?
Well, we cannot include architectural fees in the request, so that'd be liable to the county.
We know what those fees would be?
No, sir.
Eight to twelve percent.
Of the total?
The president, the total cost of the job is what, sixty-eight thousand roughly? It's ten percent, we're talking about sixty-eight hundred dollars, three thousand dollar match, we're talking about nine thousand dollars versus thirty-eight thousand dollars, thirty thousand dollars difference, so, I mean, why not move forward to try to get this done? If we don't, like, so, because we said we have...
Well, we're there, if, the, the, the original contract with Mema was, we're gonna get that done, that Adams County had the money. Uh, this is not, the money that I asked for was a special request from them, because this is part of our regulatory plan to bring up. They funded us, you know, they paid the forty percent of the project, which is twenty-five thousand dollars. Based on the county had the money already, it was done, because if anything happened, excuse me, if anything happened, they ran it up. We, on the contract, been, been decon people, and been to get those individuals here, so that's why the time is strange here, uh, they wanna see progress on, on the quarter cap, we have to give them that twenty-five thousand dollars back, and we have to fund the whole thing, I said. So, that, that's the force, but we didn't, they're understanding we weren't applying for a grant, that was their understanding.
But you just said we have a year, correct?
Right, that, that means from total construction to up in operation, we're not talking about the last day that, hey, we can open the door and turn the water, that means operation, because we have to have our planned operation on that, because that's, that's what I mean that you're in that.
I, I guess what we need to know is if the USDA, are they gonna pay us after the fact, or, or will they give us the money after the fact, and they see that we did everything we were supposed to, they'll, even if we get through with the project, they'll send us the money back, or, or give us a grant?
No, if, the money will be allocated, um, once you all sign the documentation, documents of approval, so that'd be, um, it's, it's not a reimbursement.
So, I mean, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be retroactive, that, I mean, if we, we have the showers already operational, are they still gonna give us the grant?
Um, my understanding was that it was like a, Mema, Mema had a scope, scope of work for Mema, and our, and USDA funds have to have a different scope. Now, classification needs to be discussed as far as what's covered under what scope with the money, so Mema is responsible for, um, the building of the showers.
What, the way it is, I, I know the, the terminology, uh, the, the shower... What, the way it is, I, I know the, the terminology, uh, the, the shower that we build off of decontamination. The purpose of it is dual-purpose. Their decont, their decontamination shower for the regulatory program. When the regulatory program is not used, we can still utilize them as a shelter, so it's like a two-on-one. But the main priority is the decontamination shower, the thing that we didn't do with, uh, USDA, because with USDA, when you talk about showers, there's a special requirement that you have to have for that. But when we put it in the, in the, in the plan, we made these showers ADA, so we can be compliant, in event we have to open that safe room as a shelter. It's A, it's already ADA certified with that. So that's, that's the intent of it, because decontamination shower and regular showers is different. You don't have to have all the luxuries of a regular shower that you would do in a building. We just have to have showers on site. That's the only intent of it.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'm trying to figure out your question. Was you asking if we go forward with paying with our money and seek this, uh, stuff from the D R A or whoever? U, USDA, will we get our money back?
Not, not necessarily our money back, but at least, at least they would still fund that portion, yes, the twenty-four thousand.
And my answer was no. The no. It's not, it's not, it's not gonna be reimbursed.
So that's no.
USDA will have to, uh, will, will pay upfront once the county, once it's approved, the county signs a, a, a document.
But you're saying it could be four or five months?
Or longer. And, and the shower will be completed, you know, then.
So they send inspectors down?
Well, they, they, they will have a site if they, yes, sir.
And you say how long it's gonna take to build those showers?
They probably begin to remain, so.
If we stay the, waiting on the county, phase one of our, so once we get phase one done, they're just waiting on phase two and phase three. So they're just waiting on the county.
Stop it, I, I was just curious if they were gonna, what the regulations were, it doesn't sound like they're gonna, will be able to make a cut for that. So. What's the recommendation of the board? What do y'all want to do, just tell them, uh, not follow up on the USDA?
I mean.
Because we'll have, we'll have to end up paying for something extra, that we're not gonna get reimbursed for, I guess.
Well, I'm being the consul of architect and this and this and this, I mean, my, this is, I don't do what he said, and just don't pay.
Brad said he'd help, so, okay. All right. Do you need a, do you need a motion?
To withdraw the USDA application.
All right, I need a motion. But if I missed very second by Ms. Hudson's, any more discussion? All in favor? Uh, any nays? Motion carried.
Thank you.
For you, Mr. President, I, I, I need to, uh, I, when I was reading over these minutes and, and dealing with the, uh, baseball field over there, and, uh, I, I read something where we gonna go back with that guy to get some drawings or something? Are we gonna do that?
Yes, the board approved it last, being, um, from the concept.
I was out, on the phone and couldn't hear. I thought we was gonna do something totally different, we dealing with him, but if, if that's what we said we gonna do, I guess we gonna do it. And another thing, when I read the minutes, they say that, um, that that facility wasn't available to the public. And I'm trying to figure out when has that facility not been available to the public?
That wasn't what it said, what it said is it wasn't open like wide open, it was able to be rented, but the grant through USDA, or through wildlife pictures, uh, it had to be like a park that wasn't gated. Like, wide open access twenty-four seven.
Correct.
Yeah, that was the difference, right?
Correct, correct.
See, you can't hear all that over the phone.
Oh, I know, it's awful.
Because, because President, you got these papers, you know, thing.
I have a lot of papers, baby. Thank you. I'll try to call you later on, when it, uh, about the housing stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Johnny, go ahead.
Good morning. Johnny, we have many supervisors. Uh, here. Issue dealing with County Day. The first thing is the drainage in the kitchen. I think, uh, y'all might have some paper, some options.
Okay.
Uh, I tried, uh, my pro tried to stop the sewer problem, it would happen, with no success, normally we can, but we was running into a, uh, that obviously, I called in a contractor company, they were running into the same issue. So they ran their cameras, and found out that the lines collapsed. So they gave us a couple options, a free option that we can go to, to help us, uh, taking care of it. Not gonna be, uh, badly started, because we're gonna lose some drains in the floor with the options that we won't be able to use. But they will be able to use the bathroom, sinks, garbage disposal, dishwasher.
Mr. President, do we even need the drain in the floor?
No, we can bypass it. My opinion on this was option two. And option three is cheaper, but most of them is called for running a pipe around the floor to reroute the sewer drain. Option three is calling to tap into the three-inch that's going under to the floor. I don't know if that would handle all that water, especially coming from the garbage disposal. So I would suggest option two, even though they have to, uh, remove some concrete to catch the four-inch down under the slab. The price, the estimate is a big range from seventy-five to fifteen. Uh, talking to the guy, I'd say it could be cheaper, but you don't know what you deal with. Especially if you talk about going and busting a slab, we don't have, we have no idea how thick the slab is.
President Wilson?
Yes, ma'am.
So you're saying option two would be the best option to take, and the estimate cost is seventy-five hundred to fifteen thousand, so it would not exceed this fifteen thousand? Would it exceed it or not?
To be honest, I would think that it would, uh, but I can't guarantee.
It, it would?
I don't think that it will, but I can't guarantee it.
Well, Johnny, let me tell you something. If one option says seventy-five hundred to fifteen thousand, and if it exceeds fifteen thousand, it end up being thirty thousand, that's gonna be a problem.
Yeah, I understand that.
Because that's just me saying that, I don't know how nobody else feel, but the estimate cost is seventy-five hundred to fifteen thousand. I, I understand, once you get into it, you might run into something else, I, I understand that, but as a board member, we, we, we don't have an open book, a checkbook for unlimited funds to do whatever. It definitely can't.
On, on option two, the pipe would be ran along the wall. The only time they're gonna have to bust up the concrete in one time to catch the main drain. So I really think that we will stay in the limit that they talking about, above fifteen, it'll probably gonna be about a hundred to me.
Where, where he's talking about busting up the concrete has already been busted up in the past, we don't know how long ago. I don't think the sheriff was there then, Johnny, I don't think you were there then, uh, but there's a, there's a four-inch under there to tie into. Three inches might handle it, but it's like, we do, do the, do the first option, get everything done, and we get to that point, and if it doesn't work, then we bust the concrete up. That's, that's option four, if you want to call it option four, is they would have to come back, jackhammer the concrete up in that one spot, and find the four-inch line. Uh, we can, we could take a chance on the, on the, uh, third option, knowing that we might have to come back and bust the cement up, which is not, not a real big deal, because he, he did say, because I, I went down there with him, he did say that if we could get some help from the inmates or something, get the concrete out of there, because it has to be taking our story up, uh, and exposed of, uh, then maybe the labor costs would come, come down a little bit. So if, if you wanna go with the, the option, um, three, and then if it doesn't work.
Yeah, come back.
We come back and bust the concrete up in that one spot. It's about, I don't know, three by three maybe?
Yes.
They just have to bring a jackhammer in there.
It may not cost us as much.
So you saying option three?
If we do option three, we, we'll get all the lines run to where we need them to go, and then if the three-inch doesn't handle it, we're gonna get a, do a seven, eight-foot extension, I guess, into the four-inch.
Right now, uh, the drain that he's talking about, the three-inch drain, we have two three-part sinks there. They don't handle the sinks, we get those drains and sinks one at a time. If you try to let all the water out of the sink, they would not be able to. So, I mean, even if you go with option three, the people that are in the kitchen just would have to know that, you know, not to run everything at one time, you know?
Three would just kinda be a patch job until we figure out what we're gonna do with the rest of the stuff down there.
Other reason I said two, uh, they'll, they'll come back, I'll pretty sure that the price will be a little more, to come back and break all the.
See, that's what I'm afraid of, if we go with option three, they may have to come back and do more.
Well, they're not gonna have to bring a jackhammer in there, are they?
For option three?
Uh, for the first, for, uh, the, option three, they don't have to bring an air, air compressor, jackhammer, and they don't have to bust up all the concrete. It's just gonna be running, basically running lines along the wall to come back to that drain, and cut across the floor.
But she's saying if that don't work.
Correct.
Then they have to turn around and come back and bust the floor up. It would be more than the fifteen thousand, or whatever the payment may be.
See, that's.
I honestly don't see like, like seven thousand dollars more just to bust up concrete for twelve inches deep, three foot by three foot.
It been busted up before.
It's not gonna be that same rate of concrete as in, as in the jail all over. Be the lesser amounts, quick creep.
Whatever, whatever y'all decide, I ain't got no problem with it.
But, but then option, uh, option three, they're gonna have to close the kitchen down. Option two, they might be able to do that half an hour.
I'd say we did the lesser amounts, considering the way we're going at it. Uh, what's the pleasure of the board?
Take your resolution, do, do the option three?
Motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Gray. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any nays? Motion carried. Is that all, Johnny?
No, my next thing is the elevator at, uh, County Day. Uh, it's been down for one and a half, going on too much. Uh, they all changed out three different parts, now they said the drive, that bed. Uh, we had that whole motor, their plate back in two thousand sixteen. I called to see, you know, warranty, they warranted it last a year. I called to check and see what the price going on, run us to get this drive rebuilt. And the information I'm getting, they want to know anything until they open it up and look inside, see what kind of damage it does. So I don't have any price, but the way you were waiting for calls.
Okay, when you say drive, you're talking about the motor itself?
Yes. But it's a main part of the motor.
Okay.
Not the whole, okay.
They gotta rewind it or something else, or they don't know?
They want to open it up. So I told them, just sort of leaving the meeting, I would call them back, they would, you know, find out.
Uh, can we take, who's gonna take the drive off and carry two of them or whatever?
They've already taken out, and taken two of them, I'm just waiting to make a phone call, something to go here.
To open it up and tell us what it's gonna cost to fix it? We can't make a decision until we know what the amount is.
We ship it all, and I think the company that's doing it, uh, has the drive, uh, it's our contractor company, our E, our E M R, they don't do, they, they got somebody else that, you know, who will work on it.
What it cost us last time?
We had the whole thing replaced, it was up in one, we had everything done.
And going out again?
Went back in two thousand sixteen, yes.
Okay, do we have to have a, you have to have permission to let them open it up, find out what's wrong with it?
I wanted to, I mean, I don't.
Oh, they, they know what that's gonna cost? Just to look at it?
No.
We didn't give it cost or something, just even to look at it.
Yeah, I mean, they, you know, that's the damn body, still, I'm working through our contractor company, and working through a company they deal with to work on their motor, you know, so.
But they do have the motor, okay. Can you, uh, get a call into them and find out what it's gonna cost, and come back and tell us?
I'll wait to hear back, I talked up this morning.
Okay.
So I will make a long call, I mean, I'll leave here.
We'll be here for forty-five minutes, according to Mr. Bill, so, uh, that's how long you have.
I have, I have.
Mr. President? Now, uh, I ain't trying to be funny, but you, you said certain things that the people that's cooking down there shouldn't do.
I think they don't have a better job.
Oh, no, of course, the drains and all that, I think we need to put it on the wall and let them know, everybody be on the same page, don't pour nothing down this drain, don't.
But drains won't be used, I mean, the sinks, uh, same, same, down the sink. But it's not more of what they pouring down or whatever, you got a garbage disposal that's in the food. That's a concern, I mean, because I know we're in the middle of board, they gonna catch side of the walls of the pipes and all like that. Uh, that's the only reason I was thinking option four, uh, two, because you would go to the main four-inch pipe that can handle all the damage. We getting, uh, to the point where we running our drains to you, that's good.
Yeah, my name.
You know, I got.
Four times that, we're gonna be out later.
I was thinking about, uh, if you get a floor plan, you know, it don't mean that the contractor followed the floor, you know, they could have went different route. So we went by the floor plan and say, we gonna catch it, try to see if it broke here, bust up the concrete and find out if it was changed, then you gotta go home with the floor, you gotta cash back up.
Okay.
So that's where you.
I've seen, like, I got something I want you to say about.
Twenty thousand, fifty thousand, to go through it, do the whole thing back over, you talk about check the kitchen down for, you know, a month. Even the phase that we talked about doing, they say it would take up five days to do this, because you gotta have the right valve on your pipes to get to the drain. But they do need to have, uh, dishwasher, running sort of, uh, we get, you know, inspector in there, that their dishes are getting washed at a hundred and eighty degrees, we got a problem, they'll be running.
Say, say, you got a dish washer?
Yes, that, you know, the chapter of the dish has to be washed, it's like a job to avoid water.
So if push comes to shove, they can't hand wash it?
They won't be, they, they can hand wash it and do it, long enough, uh, you know, uh, inspector will come by.
So let me ask you a question. Uh, we in a jail, and we got a dishwasher, and versus being on casino where they serving food to the public, and they hand wash, so why can't we hand wash as long as we using, uh, uh, putting them in the hot water, or whatever the case may be, and, and, and getting something, scrubbing them like that, until we can get it fixed? You, you, you don't think that'll work?
I mean, to a certain extent, it's working anyway, because the only thing that's running through the dishwasher is the plates, uh, small thing, the big pots there, and they're washing.
They hand washing anyway?
There's a great problem with that, you know, but not saying that the inspector don't know, or when we get inspected, they don't know.
I, I, I just can't see no inspector coming down there, uh, raising hell about somebody hand washing dishes, and they doing it right, versus running them through whatever. Uh, because I worked in the kitchen before, and we didn't have no dishwasher, and, and we serve millions of people. They just serving inmates.
Yeah, the thing about it, on the drain, just come over, we hook it to the drain. Two, we have a third sink, or spray rack, a garbage disposal, and the dishwasher. Along with the three or four sinks that already tied into this line. All of this will be going to one line.
I don't even think that gonna work.
Well, um, part of the problem is they did run a camera through it, and they did realize there's so much grease in the four inch line, that's, it's really only two inch line, so that's going to be.
So they pull.
That's part of the problem, they don't, we turned it to four inch line, it's probably the same problem.
The thing about it, we run out of snake, snake running in the bottom of your line, not in the top, if you run the camera, you can see all the stuff, it's in the top of your focus line.
Once you elaborate on this down here, too, when you say grease, it doesn't mean they pouring grease down the line, it's just be all so much water, dirty water.
It could come from numerous things, it could come off of dish where you wash that got a little grease on it, I guess, like if they can help it, the house from it, but most of it is your clothes. A lot of times we run snakes in there, I mean, you feel the grease, you take a lot of food, you know, you see it, it's a lot of it.
Well, the line's been here fifty, the line's been used fifty years, so it's, that's why, that's why it's like that. All right, y'all got anything else for Mr. John?
Cause I, I, when I leave, y'all, I'll call them.
Yes, okay.
And check, if I have any information.
All right, all right, let, let's, thank you, appreciate it.
Good morning.
Yes, ma'am.
I was trying to come through for Adams County, I was coming to get approval to, um, create a new fund for the, for the pool. We required the funds, we, uh, county has moved to Concordia, but in order for us to receive in the funds as they receive monies, we would need to create a new fund for them.
So, any fund?
Fund.
So, what's the fund number?
The fund number, we can, I was going to use five ten, which is their, um, department number.
Did you pull the state article?
No.
There's a handbook that gives you how, tells you what those numbers should be.
Okay, okay.
Okay, got a motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Ms. Hudson, any discussion? All right, no discussion?
So is it going to pull out of oh oh one?
Yeah, they're, they're oh oh one.
Is it going to move it out of that into the Toms River Fund?
Mm-hmm. Well, no, their, their budget is totally different from the actual funding to, for the monies, that's going to be a total difference. That's the money that's brought in from concessions, from, um, from swimming lessons and different things like that.
They were showing paper, they were showing paper amounts out of.
Right, oh, oh one, right.
And then this is just for concessions and other people.
Right, right.
Okay, um, Shaki, have you ever looked at the, uh, amount of stuff coming from Coral Williams? And versus how much money's coming in for concessions, and does it match up? And what shouldn't match it up, it should be a profit?
Yeah.
You have?
I mean, it's definitely a profit.
And it is? Okay. I just, I know it pulls down for a while, and, and, and I got a call about some big argument about at Coral Williams about something, and I'm like, it pulled shut down.
That's been straight.
Okay.
Uh, Coral Williams, it was just a discrepancy with payments, but payments have been made, I actually started taking them handed, we were in checks to them. The one of them was just the check was in the mail.
Okay.
But anything else, I don't know.
That's a two week process now, check in the mail?
Right.
It's absolutely ridiculous, but anyway, okay, we need to carry that motion, how do y'all vote? Uh, any names, motion carried, okay, thank you.
Mr. President, now that you mention it, uh, I did, uh, not even receiving a call, but in my process of being in the community, uh, I, I was, uh, they did talk to me about the pool was shut down, I didn't have no idea that the pool was shut down, and, and, and could we get a report on, uh, what's going on over there, or did they find a way to correct the problem?
It was a pump again, and I thought that we told them that we needed to, um, get the other pump rebuilt to have a spare.
Right.
Cause you, cause there's no sense in being down three weeks, or whatever it was, I don't really know how long, it was down, it was down quite a while. And, 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 uh, part of the summer where everybody's swimming, I think they had to cancel swimming lessons.
They had to refund people their money back.
Yeah, I think they did come to board and tell us about that, the pool's down, cause the pump shoots it, they told us about that, she did.
I wasn't here, I don't know.
Uh, I can't, I don't remember.
I don't know that.
I remember, tell us about that, put it down, they had to refund people their money back.
He probably did.
All right, just these.
Good morning, the name is Price, clerk for Adams County Board Supervisor. Um, first, I'd like to go over, we did find the more and the tremors, um, one more and two tremors, uh, state contract. The more was ten thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars, and the two tremors, they are three ninety-nine ninety-nine each.
Okay, you got all the, uh, you got enough quotes to?
Yeah, we have three quotes, three or four, three or four quotes, but you got to use two. It's under, um, if it's on state contract, we don't have to, um, bid on it.
Okay.
And we do have a purchase source, we just need the pool's.
Move by Ms., Mr. Milton, second by Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names, motion carried.
Okay, second of all, we had our six month and one year bids on August twenty-second at ten A M, and these are the lowest and best bids. For the six month, surface course contractors, mixed common service, one hundred three dollars a ton, the only, uh, bid was eight pack. specification nine four five, a hundred and five tons, only bid is eight pack. specification mix nineteen, millimeters, a hundred dollars a ton, eight pack, the only bid, intact coke, five dollars a gallon, the only bid is eight pack. Lay down asphalt, fifty to two hundred tons, one inch to two inch, only bid is eight pack, one seventy-five, a hundred seventy-five dollars per ton. Two hundred to five hundred tons, one inch to two inch, eight pack, only bidder, ninety dollars per ton. Five hundred and above, one inch and to one and a half, fifty-two dollars per ton, eight pack, only bidder. Five hundred and above, one and a half to two inch, five, fifty dollars per ton, eight pack, only bidder. Leveling ahead of overlay. We had, the only bid we had was the six inch, a hundred square feet and above, a hundred dollars per ton, eight pack. For covert size and descriptions, we only have one bidder, southern covert. Um, if you'd like me to go over each and every line on it, just let me know.
All right. That's my only question, Mr. President, is, uh, with all this stuff, eight pack getting, uh, is it an increase?
No.
Is not increase, is a decrease?
Okay.
The whole price gone down.
Correct. That's what decreased.
Okay, so the culverts, southern covert is the only bidder. Um, for bulk concrete per yard, St. Catherine is the only bidder, I can go over those quickly, three thousand pounds. Pressure, under seventy-five dollars per cubic yard, thirty-five hundred pounds, a hundred eighty dollars per cubic yard. Four thousand pounds, a hundred eighty-five cubic yards, to St. Cassing Harbor, eight dollars cube, per cubic yard. Fourable field, a hundred fifty-five dollars per cubic yard. And P grabber grass, a hundred and ninety dollars for a six one five pound bag. And then a hundred and fifty dollars delivery fee, F is less than, um, five cubic yards with a minimum of two cubic yard minimum. And that concludes.
That's a little more, I think, I know. Okay, thank you.
Okay, this is the one year bids. Let me make mention of something quickly, uh.
Is that all the bids?
Six months.
Six months.
Okay.
Okay. Let me make mention quickly of something that I had to give to Scott about. We, um, we received a bid from Ergon at eleven forty A M on the twenty-second, for asphalt emulsion, liquid asphalt. Um, the envelope was postmarked on August twenty-first overnight delivery, and it was guaranteed to be here for ten, but it came in at eleven forty. Also, we received a bid for material resources on August twenty-third for high performance cold mix. The envelope was postmarked March fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, I spoke with Scott, and this is the information he gave me, so bid informality may be accepted if there is no competitive advantage to the informality. Here, if both bids were mailed prior to other bids being opened, then there is no competitive advantage to their being late. Both were put in the mail and sealed prior to knowing what the lowest and best bid would be, therefore, they can be accepted, but you need, uh, you just let me know, I needed to know it on the.
Yeah, basically, they put it in the mail, they sealed it, I mean, before any other bids were open, they put theirs in the mail, and it was received an hour later. So that's a bidding informality, but you can accept those as long as it doesn't give them competitive advantage, which if they had already sealed their bid, and put it in the mail, which is what the return says, then that's an informality you can accept.
To, you said we did not have any other bids, it was the only bid, were they all?
I thought there was, was there another bid?
No. No, that's all bid, okay, cause if it was the only bid, then it's okay, but if it was other bids.
Whether, if there's multiple bids, any type of informality, you can accept as long as it's not a competitive advantage. Since it was sealed, was put in the mail, day, day before, before it, they were open, you can, there's no competitive advantage because it was an hour late. They didn't have time to, you know, go back and check their, their numbers, but.
Just we need to.
If they didn't post the bond, that gives them a competitive advantage, because they didn't have to pay the, you know, they had a bond posted in there, I mean, you got to reject those. But things like that, if it was five minutes late, but we hadn't opened our bids yet, that means a lot, still it was late, but they didn't have a competitive advantage, because the bids haven't been opened yet.
Okay, I need a motion to spread those across the minutes going on.
Yeah, and she'll have all, like, to the postmark.
Move by Ms. Warren.
This I have.
Second by Mr. Milton, any discussion? All in favor? Um, any names, motion carried.
Okay, second, I'm going to go over the one year bid, we had, um, an issue with opening up a bid in the link. I T had to get in touch with, um, someone hired, and so we were able to open it up to August twenty-eighth, and it's the only bid for this particular item as far as the, uh, bridge construction, which is Dozer. Okay, so on the, um, one year bids, we have C R S two per gallon, the only bidder was Ergon, three dollars and forty cent per gallon. Um, fifteen cent gallon for environmental free, and for the C R S, two feet per gallon, three hundred dollars and seventy-five cents, saying fifteen for environmental free, that's the asphalt emulsion and the liquid asphalt. The three eight, the gravel per yard, eight pack is the only bidder, twenty-six dollars per ton. One to one and a half unwashed gravel, fifteen dollars per ton, eight pack only bidder. Oversized course aggravate, aggravate cover material size five, twelve dollars per ton, eight pack the only bidder. Washed gravel, size fifty-seven, twenty-four dollars a ton, eight pack the only bidder. Number seven, crushed limestone, forty-six dollars a ton, Cheryl the only bidder. Number eight, crushed limestone, forty-six dollars per ton, Cheryl the only bidder. Six-ten limestone, thirty-nine dollars per ton, Cheryl the only bidder. Limestone rip wrap various sizes, Cheryl the only bidder, and it is forty-five dollars per ton. And the oversized gravel, twenty-eight dollars per ton, eight pack was the only bidder. The dirt, we had two bidders. Um, Dozer was three dollars per cubic yard, and Geronimo was sixty cent per cubic yard. So, uh, Geronimo is the lowest and best bid for that. Granular material clay gravel.
The downed days.
Excuse me?
Never asked who Geronimo was.
They bid it last year.
Yeah, he bid it last year, correct.
Okay, granular material clay gravel, eighteen dollars and seventy-five cent per cubic yard, Dozer the only bidder. Bridge construction, the only bidder was Dozer. Um, and that's a lot of details to go through, unless you want me to go through them, but I'm going to give all the paperwork to, um, Paige. And the last one, um, is general road striping. We had one bidder, and that was traffic control. Traffic control.
How much was it?
It's several different items on the striping. Um, if you'd like for me to go over each and every one, but that's how many it is, I'll go over it for you.
I don't know, they break it down by the mile, or?
They breaking it down by the size, the four inch travel stripe, yellow or white, and then the, uh, continuous white, continuous yellow. And, um, detail white stripe, ledger white four inch, that's what it's breaking down by, little road striping, and then the road striping plastic. So if you like, I'll go over it, all right?
No, that's.
Okay, I'll give all of this to Paige, you put on the minutes, and that concludes what I have, any questions?
Uh, I need a motion to put the year bids across.
And then motion, and also, a motion really accepting Geronimo for the dirt, because they had two bidders.
Okay.
If that did, that is.
Okay. Let's, by Mr. Gaines? Second by Ms. Hudson, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names, motion carried, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
He's back.
Johnny Williams, I mean, uh, I just spoke to the, uh, E M R, again, the guy that had to drive off, only back to thirty miles. He would call again, uh, just because he gave me, was normal, they extended him off, taking him there for three weeks to a month for leave, I hope, and so hopefully, next week, now I have more information.
Okay.
That I can give you.
All right.
All right.
Thank you. Mr. Teasman.
Good morning, Lord, it's Mr. Smith from Adams County Tower and, and town processor. Uh, we haven't had much going on this year, but this is the third time that, that we've had any requests. This was Verizon Wireless to replace, uh, requires a permit to place additional equipment on an American Tower, itself, site, at fifty-seven Ben Burke Road, the project will include placement of nine antennas, six remote radio, gadgets, two six by eighteen hybrid cables, two over voltage protective units, and removal of six antennas, three remote radio heads, six one and five eighth inch coax cables, and two cabinets, and one over voltage protective unit from that location. Placement of this additional equipment will improve Verizon's cellular signal in Washington areas of north and south on eighty-four and sixty-one. Order requirements have been met, and fees have been paid, and I request the board to approve this Verizon Wireless permit application.
All right, any more motion? Move by Ms. Hudson, second by Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? Any names, carried.
That's all, if there's any questions, please.
Okay, thank you.
Morning.
Good morning, sir.
All I have is, uh, we're going to set the burn ban, uh, we had, it expires on fifth of this week, so we're just going to let it go ahead on and expire. So when it get rain pretty much all weekend, we still got some more to pour, so just going to go ahead and let the burn ban expire on the fifth.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Smith. Oh, you leave, I need to talk to you about something.
Uh, Mr. Smith, I, I talked to you about that, but I won't get with Robert, uh, and we'll get back with her. I know a couple months ago, me and Scott went to Braemoos Utility, and they was talking about getting with everybody to put the reflectors, um, in the area, most of our fire hydrants got blue reflectors in the, in the roads, and that we had talked about, and you would get with the necessary people, we'll get with Robert, and, uh, you know, we'll get, and then we'll get off, I already talked to Robert, letting you know, we're rocking them, we'll, we'll look at it all again.
We just ordered some more reflectors and some blue.
Yeah, order some more.
We just ordered some more.
So, yeah, and order some more, then we'll, like we said, we're going to give with zone, and it, give with Braemoos Utility, so they'll, you know, they can know, well, it ain't going to be much for just basic marking, uh.
Yeah, more with the hydra locate.
Yeah, about hydra locate. All right, and I appreciate, we already talked on the other issue about the fire hydrant. All right, thank you.
Good morning, Lord, Brad, Brad, Adams County, we're, we're, they got a couple things, I give everybody updated on the safe room, floors have been done, uh, they look, uh, look awesome, they did put ceiling on. Uh, we're just waiting now for the painting of the front, uh, the guy did start the pressure wash, but due to weather and stuff, uh, he's going to get back and hopefully, uh, it's supposed to rain this week, hopefully get in, you know, next week. it's supposed to rain this week, hopefully get in, you know, next week, uh, start putting the painting and re-silling everything on for the front part, cause a lot of that wear and tear on the front part. Paint, stuff chipped off, so we wanna make sure, uh, that's good also. Uh, we still waiting to hear back, uh, from the individual on sirens, so there's a technical on the parts, trying to make sure they match up, federal seeming. So soon as they'll get in, we'll be out, uh, working on those sirens and things, and make sure of that, so. Everybody that know siren, they work in certain areas, they, they pretty much understand, so they are signed up with hyper reach, so they all get some alerts and things on that nation, and that. What I support, uh, Ms. Bree Cooks, I brought you earlier, she's gonna attend the E M A Advanced Academy for October sixth and eleventh, uh, in Pearl, Mississippi. Presenting her as.
We do have it approved. It's already been approved, apparently.
No, I think I just did it. I asked forward to, so she gonna apply for it, this is back for the travel.
Move by Ms. Hudson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gray. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any names? Motion carried.
Okay, next question travel for myself to attend the N E M O, uh, new director corps, uh, Pearl, Mississippi on September eighteenth and nineteenth.
Second by Ms. Hudson, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any names? Motion carried.
Uh, my second travel, request to travel for myself, I have traveled to Jacksonville, Alabama, uh, for preparedness, resilient sermon, on September twenty-fifth with the new director.
Motion. Moved by Mr. Gaines. Second by Ms. Hudson. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carried.
That's all I have, competitive question from the board.
All right. I still have to hand the paperwork.
For which one?
For any of them.
Yeah, those are the last, the last.
Okay. I was looking for a whole big stack of stuff. All right, I got Bree Cooks. Uh, do you have anything else?
That's it, Billy.
Okay. Thank you.
Good morning, board. Saturday morning, veteran service officer for the county. Uh, don't have, uh, any updates or anything, just, uh, a reminder that, uh, I will be, uh, going to the conference, a training conference at the, uh, end of this month. So, uh, I appreciate all the support from the board, and, uh, a lot of the veterans already did help, and a lot of information is out to us. That's all I have, if y'all have any, uh, questions for me. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Appreciate your service.
Thank you.
All right.
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
Okay, um, first thing I have, uh, Scott, this Coffee Point Road, um, I spoke with Wes about the money that we had got to do that. And Wes, the way we understand, we had to bid it out, is that correct?
Yeah. Do what now?
Coffee Point Road that, uh, maybe that keep, you know, the water coming a little bit blow out, um. About Robert Johnson's place, we got some money, um, to put some riprap stuff on that, uh, project, but, uh, like I said, we had to bid it out, so. Next thing I have is a budget amendment. Stephanie, you have it too. I'll take thirty thousand out of the bridge fund, and put in gravel and shale. And take ten thousand out of all the vocal equipment and put in tires and tubes. And take five thousand from all the construct, uh, constructional services and put in concrete, and then take, uh, five thousand out of topping and filling and put in coves. Stephanie, you have that in brandy, both.
Okay, I need a motion. Move by Ms. Hudson. Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussions?
Yeah, uh, Mr. President, we, we, we at the end of our budget, and you got all that money left?
Uh. Got some left, look like. Look like it's going fast, too.
Yeah, but, uh, I, man, we, we got to adopt a new budget, and, and, uh, I mean, I'm always under, understanding at the end of a budget. We just don't spend all that money if we can wait and, and, and get it out of the new budget, still getting it, spending it at the end of a budget like this, but I guess. We ain't got no other choice.
About tires and tubes and gravel and concrete and coves, that's where it going, that's our four major things that we use every year.
He's not asking for a new budget, he's just moving on old guys, finish the year out, I guess.
Keep the year moving.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names? Motion carried. Go ahead, brother.
Did you send these to Stephanie first?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
That's her.
That's her.
That's Stephanie and, uh, Fran.
Yeah.
Next thing I have is, uh, a request from a tire grant, uh, for payment of four hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Okay, I got it. I need a motion. Move by Ms. Hudson, second by Mr. Milton. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names? Motion carried. Thank you.
For Cartridge Point, we need to get, engage our engineer?
Yes, um, I suppose so, but I'd get him and Bob to do it, we thinking it one time, we didn't have to. We just spent all the money on it, and now we won't have to get engineered, get it out, you know, Bob to bid it out, so that's paying some of the money from the project to go to that, but yeah, I get with them on it.
So we was doing it in house?
No, we was on haul rocking house, and then tried to get a contractor to put the rock on the back for us to save the cost of that, to do it, to get more done with the money to get received. But, you know, we just had to spend the money the way it is, and get as much as we can get done.
You don't think five hundred thousand, no, was enough for to get that done?
That's perfect section.
Is it a couple hundred yards?
Probably so, a little long.
I hadn't been down in a while.
Yeah.
So what actually are we doing down there?
Gonna raise it about two foot, slope the back, go three to one slope, and then rip wrap the back. If we had any money left, we're gonna rip out the front side, you know, from the front side.
So we were gonna try to do that, reduce it enough?
Well, we didn't know at the time when we got the money, when we worked at Jackson Top.
We were advising, we were asking, no stipulations on that money, that's certain money, that's what they said, that we would have to be bid out, we have to engineer, engineer it, that's why we were hoping we're ready.
We're hoping we'd be able to do it, save, you know, our costs to try to get it through.
Stretch it as far as we could, trying to protect it on, on the north end and the south, we're ready.
So, if there was a plan, what happened when we can't go through with the plan?
Once we got to check in the top of the sky, it says we need to bid it out. But at first, the way they were talking, we got the money, it's nothing related to all the money that we expended, you know, on it, as we needed to, but now, it is.
So Scott checked with that to see if we had to bid that out, he did check to see if we had to bid.
That's all I have.
While you're up there, I've, I've got, uh, day off is sick on the twenty-eighth for you, that I need to get.
Yeah, I left it last week.
For, okay. I need to get a, a motion to approve this. Move by Ms. Hudson. Second by Mr. Milton. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carried.
And.
I think you need to sign this, so.
Scott, let me ask you a question, man, cause this, this is, man, so, so we get money into this county that, uh, when we got a project that we don't have to bid it out?
Nothing I'm aware of.
I ain't never been aware of that either, that's me, uh, I'm asking this question, so.
Yeah. There was confusion from our state representative and said that, and said we, I did not believe that, that's why.
Twenty-four years, I ain't never heard it before, I ain't, I ain't never heard it before.
So we got to break down, that's why I came to that, I, I.
So, uh, Robert, I, I text, uh, Robert on the, uh, on one day last week, so I met with, uh, Congressman Ben Thompson, um, the Jerusalem Baptist Church that they had been denied, so I need to ask the board for permission to them to resubmit, uh, do a letter of appeal to, uh, directly to the, uh, U S D A for a hundred percent match, and not a eighty-twenty match, just a hundred percent match. But it gotta send a letter of appeal, and I, and, uh, I need to ask for permission for them to be able to recommit the appeal on the project for one hundred percent match.
And why he's asking for that, I meant to need to, uh, Friday, Outland Garden City, on, uh, Kerry Road. The one we submitted before the match was so high, and the board didn't, you know, they did not do it because of the match. Uh, that if I send the same letter, resubmit it, they will try to do it at a hundred percent with no cost to the county.
Okay, I need a, a motion for both of those.
I have the motion. So I, I.
Drew's on church.
But did you make the motion just?
No, 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 that's what I said, let me, I made my motion to, to include all of that, Kerry Road and Garden City.
Yes, Kerry Road.
Okay.
So it will be a zero percent match on the county, and I'll have a refund.
You second that? Okay, second by Ms. Hudson. Uh, any discussion?
I, I only discussion I have, uh, uh, Mr. President, so, so what I'm hearing, if we submit a letter with these E W P, then it's a possibility that we can get it funded for a hundred percent.
Hundred percent.
Is that what I'm hearing?
That's what you mean.
That's what we told the tribe, if we, we submit it directly to.
U S D A.
U S D A for these projects, that need to weigh the match, match.
My, my, my comment is this, so now we got the key to the puzzle, then we need to submit that same letter to all of our E W Ps. Well, if possible, we won't have to have a match.
We can try to, but let, let, let me also put in that motion too, that once we do these projects, uh, they do this, the county will not maintain those projects.
Send us zero percent match.
Zero percent match, we would not, that's why we would not maintain them.
No skin, okay. Now, go ahead, Ms. Milton.
That was my concern.
Okay, okay.
Only, only one part, I think.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any names? Motion carried. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
So it'll be on the individual? It's gonna be on the bid, once it's filed.
Uh, good morning, board. I'm already doing updates this morning. Uh, tomorrow, we will have the pre-construction meeting for the S A P oh-one ten M, private only project, for Kingston Road, Goldwoodville Road, and Almond Road. That pre-construction meeting will take place at nine A M. In the sense, the project is not that complex, the region will be held virtually, um, fifteen, uh, Microsoft teams. The update that I have for Morgan Town Road is already been given by our board again. Uh, we have a pre-construction meeting on Monday the twenty-sixth, uh, we never been contacted. They have tender date starting the August first, um, or they will be content on availability of materials. Um, so once we get a country date, then we will return and provide that date to the board. Uh, notice of award for E W P project number C zero-seven-nine, that is for Kingston Road and Clinton Road. We did submit that document to N R C S, um, and we did receive a doc, uh, executive document back. And also that delinquent performed report that we had submitted three times. I reached out to N R C S again, and asked me to submit that document to them again, and they were good at process, so I did submit it to them again. Um, as far as, uh, we have the letters prepared for the response to the state aid forfeiture of funds letter. Um, I will send it over to Mr. Slobber, allow him to look over the word, the wording of it, if he needs, he can make any adjustments till he can. That document will then need to be placed on the county letterhead, signed by the president, uh, forwarded back to me, and then I will submit that document to the county.
Did you say we're forfeiting money?
No, you remember the forfeiture letter that the state aid sent out?
Okay.
Sent out. We have a response to it, since last board meeting, it was low water bridge was selected, so we have a letter prepared. I'm sending it to Slobber, make sure it's worded correctly, and then he can forward to you all for placing on the letterhead and sending. And then once you send it back to me, I'll forward it over to the county, and it'll be under them, um, they will make the determination whether or not they will sell the letter or not.
And Mr. Ford, we did receive, this is a formal concurrence of award, uh, for the contract on S A P oh-one ten M to Rainline, and just wanna have that spread across the minutes, and we did get that back from the state.
Yes, and so again, that pre-construction meeting tomorrow, they will hope to actually get started Thursday or Friday at the earliest, and it shouldn't only take them about two weeks and a half.
Get a motion to spread that across the.
Okay, motion is spread, that document, move by Ms. Hudson, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carried.
As I'm talking about striking projects, during the previous board meeting, um, I was, I, I stated that if you just provide me the road, I would provide an estimate for to have that project road strike. Um, I received Greenfield Road, that road is approximately three point four miles, um, we have estimated cost of seventy thousand dollars to strike that road. Um, Cardinal Drive, it also was three point four miles from Duck Pond to the dam, um, it was seventy thousand dollars as well, and then, um. Cause those things that I.
South Wind.
South Wind, I had wrote determined that, from approximately sixty-one to Greenfield Road, it was two point two miles, and it's, uh, forty-five thousand, one hundred dollars was estimated cost to have those. Neither one of these road segments fall within state aid project, so, um, just count about the term and funding source if they would like to have those projects, right?
So we taking roads that's not part of state aid?
That just says, so.
But let me say this, on, uh, Cardinal Road, Robert, did you get a price at one time for that road, and it was like thirty-five thousand? It's, it's.
That's about when we first get started, when everything come up, like I said.
Okay, I, I do have one other thing on, uh, we got bridge posting, uh, from the state aid engineer, Harry James, uh, Adams Bottom Road, the ditch, says the posting is missing.
We submitted it to the road department, they took care of it, and we sent it back to.
Okay, did we need to spread that across the minutes, and we just need to get y'all's comments on that, if that's place to sign?
Yeah, we've never, we've always, we've had a lot of those, and we just, you were just.
Okay, it was just in, it was in my file, I'm gonna get it out of my file.
And the last one I have is, um, he just, I have our copies of the state maintenance report, and what it is, is this allows you to go through and see if any road in the county has a previous project running, if you might want to do a maintenance project running, um, if you ever have a question, I just do, have. You might want to do a maintenance project on it. Um, if you ever have questions, I just do, have this hard copy for your reference.
Oh.
And I hand those out.
Do we still have a lot of money in the State Aid fund? What's, what could we do about Liberty Road? The side of Liberty Road? I mean, there are so many places where the asphalt's broken off for eight or ten inches into the road. And, and, and you drop down eight inches if you off the road. I mean, I, I saw like, I traveled around three or four times this past weekend. And, uh, I saw no less than ten of them. But, but it's always been a problem. That one and Kingston are both that way.
Several of those are that way.
So if you have a project that, we have a road that's already in a State Aid, you can use some of your, you can use State Aid funds to address them, um, by resurfacing that road. And one of the items that's included in resurfacing the road is edge repair. When we excavate, so being inches down, putting in asphalt and then come back and put the regular surface over. We call it edge repair. It's the same thing as, uh, base repair. Uh, we have a failed area, uh, usually make a sole, um, underneath. We excavate the material out six, eight inches and just pack and put in asphalt in and look to make sure it's a solid base and then come back and resurface over.
Uh, can we do something with those two roads or look into that? King, Kingston and Liberty Road?
I provided an estimate. I can provide another estimate.
Do you already have one for doing that? Or are you talking about paving the road?
Paving the road. I'm not sure of county, I'm not sure of State Aid will allow spot repair. They don't come to them resurfacing and allow those prepared to be included in the resurfacing.
So we'd have to do sections because there's no way that we got enough money to cover. How much do we, what do we have available?
Um, I think the last I checked was four million dollars.
And if we could do a good portion of this, something like that, couldn't we?
Yeah, they had recommended spending a couple, couple of million dollars of this year that they.
All right, what, uh, what part of Liberty Roads and, and Kingston Roads?
I was just about to say that on Liberty Road, because where the worst spots is, is where it starts on Liberty Road. If you can do it up to the La Grange Road would be good. That's where your worst spots are.
About four miles?
You know where the range turns off, uh?
Baby.
I guess we need to figure that out and see, um, because is it still four hundred? Thousand dollars a mile, is that what it is?
Two hundred.
Two hundred.
Two hundred.
Two seventy-five.
Has it gone down any at all since asphalt's gone down?
Probably not.
Labor costs, man.
Two hundred seventy-five thousand. Well, the reason why, babe, so there's a difference in if you get a contract and come and just pay. And you get a con, and you get a project through State Aid. State Aid requires striking, paving, signage, and all other deficiencies prepared when you do the project. Somebody else may come in and just pay that. But we require to do all those maintenance items that I said. So that's why you're gonna have a difference in per amount of price from the State Aid project. And you can act on your own, uh, terms.
And the State Aid project is how much? It is two seventy-five. Well, let's see how far that is, then we can figure out how much of maybe Kingston Road.
The price is an estimate. I have no brand on the numbers on.
Right, yeah. Go ahead.
Mr. President, yeah, that's what I'm, he, he asked a question I was gonna ask, but you do say you have a list, a roads, a State Aid roads that you're gonna pass out, or?
Uh.
Email? Or can you email me that list of those State Aid roads? Well.
So what I.
Robert, if you might can help me, uh, I had to dig it up. We had, uh, State, did State Aid give us like a recommendation plan? All stuff that we can do?
They, they give us that every year. After they write the roads, they give us, uh, yeah. Of, uh, what their recommendations are. Like I said, they get the recommendations, finish a couple of million dollars like that.
It's more of a, well, we flip the cards off now.
And so, you know.
Don't wait till somebody gets.
And what I, what I would ask if it's, uh, uh, the pleasure of the board, I know we got, uh, our supervisors know we got some certain areas that we might want to do, but if we're gonna spend some money, our, uh, active is okay with the pleasure of the board, that the road manager actually looked over that list and some of the worst spots. Cause you know, y'all on the road every day and actually just kind of give us a recommendation on some of the things that you ride and that you see this, that this in the, uh, caliber of State Aid that we might can, uh, that we might can do. If that's, if that's fine with the rest of the board.
It, it looks like the two we just mentioned are some of the ones that have most, most, uh, checked.
It's, it's hard, but you can see all the stuff there.
So, you know, previously I did send an estimate out for roads and also sent that list out, so I can resend that to everyone again.
Please do that, because we need to, we need to go ahead and spend that before we end up losing it. And so we, we need to get together, figure out which one we're gonna do.
Um, that's the only update I have that are pushing for me. I can answer them now.
Did we carry that last motion? We carried the last motion, didn't we?
Yeah, we did.
Okay, all right. Is that all you had?
Yeah, and in Merk Road, I did get, um, an email from M dot X, them to move forward with the right-of-way certification. Uh, how can we submit a document that came from there? I didn't see any issue pending, so they just supposed to go ahead and go through the, the certification.
Yeah, I talked to him Friday and I sent an email. I think you were copying me on it. They didn't give me a lot of guidance. Wait, I, I did fuss at him a little bit, cause on this and the other, it seems like we're stuck in limbo.
Unfortunately, we got that permission slip from the, uh, uh, St. Catherine's Creek Wildlife Refuge, because she's gone now. There's not enough, enough anybody coming in for a while, so.
Well, we need it out for bid because it's a special use permit that expires in December. So if we can get construction more upon it, that'd be great if M dot would, and I've already told him, it's like three right-of-ways you're talking about. One's federal, which we know that will have any rights under the Fifth Amendment. So certify and get us done. So we'll kind of follow back up. I sent him another George to get over on that.
Get that and get what we just go put that temporary bridge in.
That's, that's what I said. We really just need the temporary bridge.
You know, y'all can give me some, whenever I can start or get it going, let me know. Cause I thought, Mr. Ford, this morning about it. I just made heads up, I have to move that fence, rub my, you know, what I need cleaned up and then we.
And that's part in, uh, so I'm gonna call L S B T M. I'll see if we can at least get, let's get going on the temporary bridge. Yeah, help, help significantly on the flap on York. They asked for a letter decertifying the flap on York. Did we, I thought we'd done that already. You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I know, it's hard to me, but I can prepare a letter saying we want to recertify the flap.
All right, we, it was two different funding sources. We don't need them both, and it just adds to our regulations. So we're asking for flap to be defunded. George sent over a letter asking for that.
It will have to be on the county letter, because it's not gonna come to me, you're not gonna come to me.
Just, you can email to me, I'll forward it to Paige. We can work with her for that.
Certainly.
Moved by Mr. Milton, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Any needs? Motion carries.
I can get over to you this evening.
All right.
Uh, sure.
Is that all you had?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, all right, appreciate it.
Mr. Ford, real quick, before you end robbing both the odds. I've seen a couple of phone calls over the last couple of weeks about the intersection of River Terminal and Providence Road. About eighteen wheelers having trouble making that turn, the car, if it stops. I don't really know what we can do.
And Providence is sitting at Providence, and they're trying to turn, come in front of the port, turning.
Coming both ways.
Like the intersection ain't wide enough?
Yeah, I mean, why now? How old's that intersection? You know what I'm saying? I told them, I don't really know.
Is it city?
No.
Are there big holes while they keep going off the road a bit?
It's passed where the city is. I passed it, you're at the end of the playground.
Probably. I mean, just look at it. I, you know, there were some trees growing up in that ditch that we sprayed. And I'm wondering if that was part of the problem. People could see, you know, that might be pulling out. I don't know. Just when you're out, just look at it. I don't really. I'm just gonna bring it up.
All right, thank you. Barment report.
I know y'all got the idea. I wanted, um, supervisor Milton, that turn you talking about is bad. And the reason why they can't make it is because there is no shoulder. When you make that turn, it's about four or five foot drop.
You know, if you go like, we're gonna buy that barber shop.
Yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna turn over right there, so that's why they can't make it.
It's tight, but it's always been tight. I mean.
All right, what, uh, what you passing out is, that's, that's what, uh, Catherine Bryan requested from us for the needs assessment. I just wanted you all to see some of the data that we're pulling and getting compiled for that needs assessment. We actually have a phone call with, sorry about changing schedule for you, Scott, but we'll keep you updated on it. But we actually have a Zoom call scheduled to meet with her this Friday at ten, ten AM. We have one for Mr. Buddy Johns with the mock or pause at nine AM this Friday, so. Uh, for the trash, though, I had to get y'all next meeting. I don't have it today. I do have a meeting today about the LPRs. Not, not today, I'm sorry. Uh. Actually, about the LPRs, I, I was gonna ask if one of the supervisors could possibly be on September eleventh that day with me, with those guys, but you can't understand.
With who now?
The LPR system pay group. The ones I was telling you all that they, they gonna try, we, we're gonna get at least ten or fifteen of them for free. And I really wanted the supervisor to get the information firsthand, so if any of you all free would like to meet us at Crayle Street Plaza that day at eleven, it'd be great, if any of you are.
Are you gonna send out a text or something, or a reminder, because I'm, I'm?
I will, uh, I will. And.
My wife does a gotcha thing, like, she didn't know we had to go to this tonight. I'm like, no. Uh, somebody's got to tell me.
You, you asked about vehicles of President Wilson. I got, uh, got some information for you on here. Right now, we have fifty-two vehicles, uh, and five are about to be sold. But, but here's the breakdown of those ones you asked about within that timeframe. We have one that's nineteen ninety-eight that's used every day. We have two, we have two two thousand fours, uh, that's being used every day. We have one two thousand six, which is one of our transport vans that's being used every day. We have two, we have four two thousand thirteens, five two thousand fourteen, one of which is our transport van that's used every day. We have five two thousand fifteens that's used every day, and we have one two thousand seventeen. I just want to give you a rundown. How many vehicles we have is under two thousand eighteen.
Okay, uh, probably that'd be good for Johnny Byrne to have that information, so that he can make sure he doesn't believe those.
I'm definitely gonna deal with him, but those are being used every day. Like, investigating is everybody using those cars. The older ones, we kind of shift to other areas that won't require much head lift than those patrol vehicles.
The, the question kind of is, is if, if we total one of those as that, so those older models, what are they gonna pay for? If we're paying four thousand dollars a year for the collision, and they're gonna give us two thousand dollars for the vehicles we total, it doesn't, doesn't add up.
As long as they got uninsured motors on, you won't, you won't have a problem. So I, I'm totally agree with you, so.
I ask.
Liability and uninsured.
Yeah, liability and uninsured. I asked him to, uh, email me whatever list he has, because I mean, I'm looking at county's list and it's, it's, it's gonna need to be updated as well, because like the helicopter, we got rid of the ball already.
And it's still on it. See, that's what I was trying to.
We stopped paying for, we stopped paying for insurance on it. I know that, because I had that cut off.
Yeah, but they still need to come off the inventory list because it's reported, no matter what. That's inventory that is here. Doctor's come down and it's not here and it's on the list.
They love insurance stuff we don't have. We're, we're, they have no liability whatsoever.
That list changed quite often because of bricks and things like that that we are working on. Um, I do have a meeting today with Six Fire, and at eleven forty-five, I was gonna ask if one of y'all wanted to attend. And the reason why I'm asking is because y'all was saying y'all couldn't get internet out there on Foster Mountain and all that. Well, I thought we could either until I met with them face to face. And now we have internet at the fire range, which is in a hole. That's why they said we couldn't get it, go with new technology. We ready to get internet at the fire range. So if anybody wants to, to meet with me, with Six Fire today at eleven forty-five, door is open to you.
Your words, I think.
Crayle Street Plaza.
That's the meeting place, huh?
That's the meeting place. Crayle Street Plaza. If you don't meet here at this time, we need to be at the same time. Uh, project middle camera update. As you know, the city, the county, the county area, the day and all been on that grant. As of today, we had four or two cameras that were listed to be put up. Thirteen of them have went up, uh, so far. Those thirteen are waiting to be uploaded to the server. And also we replace, uh, we asked that they replace the one that Justice scored. The technician is coming in one to two days to work on the rest of it, but I just wanted y'all to know that progress, that, that proj, uh, project is still going on, they still installing cameras. And the last thing that I'm gonna make a suggestion to the board about is to get them to look into how AI is affecting county boards. Like right now, there's a big move with law enforcement, sheriffs officers, and police departments all over, because, you know, all they have to do is hear your voice on the AI and put it, and we can change everything you're seeing. And we can put up an image of you and create you without you, without you knowing. And it's a big, big, big thing that's in governance right now, so I would just suggest y'all get them to look into, uh, look into how AI might be affecting boards and supervisors and county.
We already doing that, man. Good. You have anything?
Molly, I think we're gonna have another CJ CC meeting after we meet with, um, Kat. Cause she will be sending out dates that we're gonna be meeting with different groups, so we'll probably have that at the end of this month.
And we're pushing, I know y'all asked about the needs assessment and how, how long it's gonna take. But I gave y'all that, so y'all can see how much data they're requiring for leave, step foot on the ground now. And, which is a lot of data, so I'll be reaching out to the search reports, DAs, officers, justices, everybody trying to make sure that we got what we need on our end. I go here locally to have this stuff to them by money, you know, but that's gonna depend on how other officers work with us. They are, I've assigned a team to it, and they already getting ready together. And I do want to say I appreciate you did, because she had, she is working hard. She is working very hard to come up with solutions. I understand that, that, I understand the severity of what's going on. I just appreciate all of, of what y'all do. It's definitely, I appreciate you and Scott too. I know I worked a mess out of y'all, just know I appreciate y'all.
Uh, Sher, we brought up AI, made me think about something. I've, I've worked on a couple of houses here, and, and I put them up for sale. And one of them showed up on the internet. It's two oh three Liberty Road, right about the First Baptist Church. For rent for seven hundred dollars. But it's no way, this is a two hundred thousand dollar house.
Scammer.
At any rate, yeah, and, and people are calling, they're going by the house and stuff, and they're, they're, people are actually sending money for deposit to these scammers. And I, I don't know what you can do about that.
AI has increased the level of.
I mean, it's a beautiful picture of the house.
And I'm gonna tell you what you should do. You need to go to the courthouse when you leave here today and make sure they're not trying to take over your house. So a lot of times when they doing it, they can put in some false paperwork, and they trying to take ownership of your house. Now, the FBI has a fraud line, the FBI has a fraud line that you can call with all this stuff. They are heavily encouraging people to utilize this fraud line that they have because they are investigating. I, I just left the FBI like last week, meeting with Director Ray up there. And the stuff that we were privy to see and to, to go into up there, it was, it's just monumental what law enforcement, whether state, local, or federal is up against right now. And, and, and you know, just talking to them, I just gotta say that, you know, they had two FBI agents showing us chairs and chiefs around. It was about six of us that they flew up to meet with them. Some of those guys say they had, you know, twenty-three years, had never been in a room with the director, never shook his hand, never even met. And so for us to be able to come to a meeting like that and put small, little law enforcement forces that was on the map and at his counter, speaking by, I mean, this is probably one of the busiest meetings in the world for the president. He's the director of the FBI, I mean, he see all, hear all, and have to come up with answers and solutions for all. And one of the things they, they are harping on heavy is pay attention to AI. Pay attention to it. Just like you just said, that I had no clue that was happening, but now I hate to say it, you need to check.
Well, well.
They put in these, and they would, they would, they would try to steal your house from right up on.
The Realtor tablet wrote, said this, this is going on all the time around here, and all of a sudden.
Nationwide.
You have a nice looking house, they're gonna take a picture of it, they're gonna try, they're gonna try to rent it from Florida or wherever. And, and people are silly enough, unfortunately, or convinced these people are legit, and they'll send the deposit and, and amongst rent or something to them. And they'll. and they'll send the deposit, a- and amongst rent or something to them, and they'll never see their money again.
Well, they do it with us, they go on our website and take our pictures and names, and say we gonna put y'all in jail, that you don't send money. And you'll be amazed at how many doctors in this town have sent money to people thinking that their little ones are locked up, and I say, why don't y'all just call me? I promise you, before you send some money, please call me before you pay for somebody to run, because we don't solicit run money or things like that through the internet, but you have doctors in this community who have failed for that and paid money, thinking they little one is trouble somewhere.
Best thing to pay money is through a check, a written check. To say it this way, because the law still protects you on, on checks, so.
Let me call me like that, yes, let me call me like that, I wish them luck, I'm, I'm sorry, I knew they were gonna get you.
I just wanted y'all to know that that's happening, and it would, you know, I know y'all in that board, M A I S, is that what it is with supervisors? Y'all might wanna have that brought up as a topic for the next conference, seriously. Have somebody come in and speak on how AI is affecting county boards. Y'all have any questions for me?
I talked with Bill Rosman about, like, mental health or whatever, so be sure that they include that in there. In their consultant thing, because that creates some net margins, it's a statewide issue, so.
Okay, are you talking about with the needs assessment? All right.
I'll text you out.
All right.
Thanks Sheriff.
Thank y'all.
All right. Public comments, anybody with public comments? All right. Okay, round of thanks, Mr. Gray.
You, you want something?
No, I just looked on Tracy's page, I didn't want to interrupt her.
Okay, uh, I don't have that much today, but I do wanna recognize some names I can't even pronounce, uh. Yara Shahinda and Noah Harris. The school's first black student by the president, uh, in their, at Harvard. And their grandparents was Kenny Randall, the parents of sixty-five, Sadie V. Thompson, and Noah grandson. And Don Gordon Senior is, is the grand, and uh, Murders is the grandparents of uh, Noah Harris. So that's amazing, uh, people from Natchez is, is doing it all over. Uh, Scott, could you look into and see the last time that the uh, we collect uh, the money that we collect for the municipalities inside the city limits, the last time it been increased? Could you look into that?
Looking to what now?
The money, that, that, the taxes that we collect inside the city limits for the city, we charge them a fee. Could you find out when the last time that it's been increased? Because I think it's been the same since two thousand, when I got it off, and it's still the same. So maybe we need to look at trying to increase it a little bit. And you say you're gonna take care of the uh, homestead with Ms. Carter, right?
Yes, I'm gonna contact Department of Revenue, and I think they may have stayed on, so I'm gonna find out why they think that she needs to reapply, but she didn't.
Okay, uh, I've been getting calls and being stopped and everything else with Morgan Town, uh, with Gray River. And uh, we got a problem out there, uh. There are, I, Scott, can you send something to the Public Service Commission in Gray River and see can we get them back down here again for a meeting? Uh, where the people that live in that area that's being affected could uh, understand what's going on and why their water bill is a hundred and seven dollars now? I mean, you talking about high, that's high. I mean, you, you, you got Gray River, you got the City of Natchez, and Gray River is the middle person. They buy water from the City of Natchez, and then they turn around and sell it to the people in Morgan Town. And uh, the price of water just went up a bit too high in the Morgan Town area.
Y'all can see the sewage they charging.
They got sewage and water.
Yeah, just, just sewage and sixty or seventy dollars a month.
I always thought when you increase somebody's fees on water, you have to have a public hearing, but I don't know about these private associations. I think they just can send something to your bill and, and, and uh, uh, tell you that they gonna go up on your water and sewage, and they just do it.
I thought the Public Service Commission had to do that, or approve it, and apparently they don't, apparently they don't, I don't know.
That's what I thought. And the last thing is, um, Chester Field. We still haven't came to a, a agreement on how we gonna charge people for using that field, and it, it, it's, it's right around the corner, so we need, as a board, we need to uh, make some decisions, uh, how we gonna handle that, and, and, and uh, go and get it in writing, and get it out to whoever we need to get it out to. Because I know the SWAC probably gonna try to, uh, have a SWAC tournament, or have a SWAC game here uh, again this year. I don't know, it didn't work last year, I'm just saying they probably do that again this year, I don't know. But we need to have uh, our business in order. Um, and uh, Brent?
Yes, sir.
When uh, individual mispaying their taxes for, is it three consecutive years, and somebody else paid, or how do that go?
So the property, for instance, the twenty-three taxes went to land sale last Monday, so they will uh, have until twenty twenty-six to pay those. So it's two years from the date of the land sale they have to redeem.
Okay.
But they're paying eighteen percent interest?
Yep, one and a half percent for a month, once it gets down to us.
That's why people buy them, because they get one and a half percent of the money.
Don't educate their kids on when their parents die, they say, well, they left me a house. But they didn't educate them on that you still gotta pay taxes on that house. And by the time they find out that you gotta pay taxes, somebody else done paid the taxes for three years or whatever, and, and, and there's a lot of people uh, losing their property like that. They can see somebody losing their properties when they don't know what's going on. Uh, I know everybody kind of familiar with what happened to the uh, city councilwoman up in Jackson, uh, Angelique Lee. Uh, and uh, you gotta be real careful when you in office, because uh, at the end of the day, you gotta do stuff indecent in order, evidence she was out of order, uh, and, and, and it ain't funny, but when a federal agent come to you, come at you, and flirt with you, and make you think that they wanna be in a relationship with you, and they the FBI, that's kind of crazy to me. But uh, at the end of the day, you, 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 you gotta watch your back, because people laugh on your face, and they saying, no, they got a knife in your back. And my sympathy goes out to the Foster family, the uh, Farrell Atkins family. Mr. Reynolds Atkins called me about a month ago, dealing with someone with his wife being transferred from the hospital, and I didn't even know she had passed. But I did call the ambulance service, and they didn't write over and, and uh, moved her from the hospital back to the home, and I was sorry to hear that she passed away. The Evans family, the Holmes family, the Griffin family, the Donovan family, uh, the Donaldson family. And uh, the Baptiste family, Mr. Baptiste was, was a, uh, I don't, you know Mr. Rafe back then.
They know Mr. Rafe, good man.
And uh, he, he funny, he talk funny, but uh, at the end of the day, uh, people gotta understand uh, how to lead generational wealth to their family, and, and Mr. Mr. Baptiste wasn't it. I ain't saying he had no BS or no master degree or no stuff like that, but when it came time to uh, lead generational wealth for his family, he had a doctor's degree in how to do that, and Kevin knows what I'm talking about. But anyway, uh, Sheriff, I know you ain't got nothing to do with this, but uh, the shootings are up, and people are shooting now a little more in these neighborhoods, and the majority of them are in the city limits. So, when, when your committee that you own talk about the NOLA cameras, and, and y'all got some left, make sure you put them in the high crime areas, uh, mention that that's where they need to go first, because I think uh, the NOLA cameras have made a tremendous difference in holiday apartments. So, when, when you coming around, close around Daisy Street, people moving back around and moving back in these areas, you got a lot of bannet houses and tall grass, and it's getting to be scary, man, because every night I'm hearing gunfire. And we need to get on this right now, before it really, really, really get out of control, because I, lady stopped me yesterday and said she had four or five bullets came through her house. I mean, it's getting crazy. And, and to mention Mr. Baptiste, he called me about two days before he passed, or three days before he passed, and, and on Grant Street, he had one of his nice trailers that he was finna move somebody out of one of his houses. He left the trailer over there, and the next day had trailer say, look for me. So you got a lot of people uh, stealing in that area too. And uh, I'm just saying this because people do have cameras in that area, and, and when somebody takes something that's not theirs, and people got cameras and don't wanna be involved, I really don't even understand that. I, I really, I mean, make me think you part of the problem. Uh, we just gotta be real careful, because uh, I, I, I'm gonna say this. I gotta find this, because, and, see, I, I'm gonna remember, the church Sunday, pastor preached about when you are in your lowest low. That's when you gotta be real, real careful, because that's when the devil can attack you, because you already at your lowest low. And, and, and the things that you used to do, you start changing, and, and you're not yourself. And, and you gotta be real, real careful, because uh, in America, we, we need to start praying a little more, and, and, and uh, stop putting our trust in man, and stop putting our trust in God, because we, we in a bad situation in the United States of America, and, 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 and we stand up every board meeting and recite what we recite, and we a long way from being together in this country. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Uh, we have two things. Robbie, let me ask you this question also. Another deal field, we talked about deal field road, that project on deal field road. Do we also need to submit that, the board needs to approve and submit that, so, because it's gonna be a one hundred percent match also?
Talking about the rock?
No, the uh.
Oh, you're talking about Mr. Ed. We can, but that should go through another division, other than that, uh, E W P, that should go through the other part of the water soil conservation. But I'll see, we'll be back for the next meeting if I need to.
Get it approved, do us, perhaps. Uh, but we can go ahead and submit, right?
I, I will. And I'll call the guy and make sure that he is part of my team to do that too.
Okay, sounds great. Uh, the other thing else, I need to get approval for Supervisor Gaines, Supervisor Gaines and myself, they're on Southwest Planning and Development uh, board to a meeting in Colorado time for September the seventeenth, and it would be no traveling expense.
All right, need a motion?
That's a motion.
Seconded by Mr. Gaines, folks, a little question. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion, carry.
And that's all I have.
Mr. Gaines?
Uh, Robbie, I just, uh, I'm reading a text, uh, Saint James Church, Saint James Avenue on, uh, T Road, got a ground washout, right there, said they can't get any driveway. And um, that's basically all I have today.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gaines. Mr. Middleton?
Secure everything during the meeting that I had.
All right, Mr. Middleton. Ms. Dean?
I don't have anything, okay.
Ms. Lewis?
I just have two things to spread across the minutes. Um, the first is the August new report for the Attorney General's Office.
All right, need a motion? Moved by Mr. Gaines. Seconded by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? All right. Any names? Motion, carry.
And then we have received the um, executed lease agreement with Delta Bank, or the Whitey and Chester Willisfield, and just need to get that spread across the minutes.
Need a motion? Moved by Ms. Hutchins.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor? All right. Any names? Motion, carry.
That's all.
Ms. Clover?
Okay, a pay request on the Bellwood Levy, the pay request was for six hundred and twelve thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars and fifty cents. Needs to be approved.
Need a motion?
Still move.
Moved by Mr. Gray.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Any names? Motion, carry.
So that would be docketed, it's gonna be docketed for sixty percent of the amount, uh, the lawsuit is already approved, this pay request. There's another pay request application on the IP cleanup, and it's for a hundred and thirty-six thousand eight hundred dollars. I asked Robbie if he's taking a look at an IP, he said that that sounded all right, and we looked at it.
Excuse me, it was already on the docket.
What's that?
Seen that hundred and thirty-six thousand on the docket. That was on the docket.
Was that already approved, this pay request?
Oh, that's a different one?
That's for Bellwood Levy. This, this is pay request number two. Pay request number one, Bellwood Levy, was approved last meeting. And so we get, we approve docketed.
Okay, I just noticed.
We never docket without y'all's first approval.
Yeah, I've noticed in the hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar payment on there.
Yeah, I didn't think that.
Okay.
All right, need a motion?
So this is IP clean, cleanup, so I asked Robbie to set it.
Moved by Mr. Middleton, seconded by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion?
Uh, you say how much?
Hundred and thirty-six thousand eight hundred dollars.
Where is it coming from?
There is a grant that we got from uh, NDA, and then there was a, an appropriation that we had agreed to out of the.
So we got balance on it? We got any money left?
That's not in debt, and we're kind of even close to being finished.
Thank you.
All right, any more discussions? All in favor?
All right.
Any names? Motion, carry.
So those will be docketed next meeting, so if you see something alike, you can go and fix it again. Uh, there was a request on the power line, move on to Quine Center. We need to get it approved, if it hadn't already been, been approved.
Do it have to be? I thought it was, they were going through the thing, uh, it was under five thousand, right, but we, we seen it last meeting, Kevin had it, uh, you brought, I don't know, so I thought it was under five thousand, it'd be done, so.
Okay, he still says he needs a motion for us, just spread.
Yeah, but I'm looking for it throughout the meeting.
Just to get, make sure, I, I just make sure everyone's on the same.
Well, because, well, able to pay, because we gotta get the work done first, I think I'm, I'm, I'm gonna make the motion too.
Motion by Mr. Gaines.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Middleton. Uh, any more discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion, carry.
And I'd sent over a revision to our handbook regarding the healthy U. Uh, we talked about incentivizing people for using their healthy U visit, uh, that they would get an extra day of, of time off if they did it. Uh, the proposal that I submitted over to the board was, not only is it within course and scope of employment, to go to the healthy U visit, but if you could take advantage of it, then you can get, and make additional eight hours of, of leave.
Need me to spread that across the minutes?
I mean, the board has to approve it, if y'all know.
I need a motion to spread that across the minutes. Moved by Ms. Hutchins.
To the policy.
Yes.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Any names? Motion, carry.
That's all, yeah.
Uh, Ms. Washington? She hasn't, she doesn't have anything. Brings it back to me. Um, all right, I got a request for travel, for Kristic Essel, uh, Juvenile Justice, to go to Biloxi, I need a, I need a motion. Moved by Ms. Gaines, seconded by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion, carry. Got two applications for leave, one for, this is at Boca Vernon, one on Nine. one on nine five of twenty-four and one for November the twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh of twenty-four for appointments. I need a motion. Moved by Ms. Gaines. Need a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carried. All right, I got another proof for travel for Mary Kay Dottery, Justice Court, juvenile justice. Going to the same conference in Biloxi. Need a motion? Moved by Mr. Gaines. Second by Ms. Middleton. It's eleven twelve through eleven fourteen.
Next month?
November. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carried. Got a letter that I need to sign, teaching all state benefits from the Adam County Supervise with our group number on it. Immediately, I hereby request that Beverly Green and Troy Dixon, the pet group, be assigned as agents of record serving our account. Please provide, provide Beverly Green and Troy Dixon, for them, for those needed regarding the account, standing this letter. Neither party may be bound to this contractual agreement. I don't remember doing that, but I have it outside.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Gray. Second by Ms. Hudson. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carried. Yeah, oh, Mr. Baptiste, was a pleasure to meet and to know and if he, if he need to get on your book, he can get on your book. And I got it off and trying to put this deal together all the time, so it will. And I had some wonderful conversation with him at his house and his wife. Is it Inez?
Per, no. What's her name? Is it Per?
Oh. And they were great people. I really enjoyed them.
I came, I walked up in the house and I say, well, okay, let me talk to you, Kevin. Let me talk to you. We gotta talk about this now. And if, and if I looked up, she say, man, you sound just like him. You been doing it so long, I can sound just like him.
He was something, he was something good man, though. I really enjoyed meeting him and getting to know him. Okay, we, I've got this, I traveled out here for the nurse, nurse practitioner for a year of traveling back and forth, the ferry. I need approval to do this. Nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars. And if we make a motion, then we can just, you can discuss it with Scott. Okay.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Gray. Second by Ms. Hudson. Discussions? Scott, this is unusual.
We in a new situation?
August twenty-third, twenty-three through August twenty-ninth, twenty-four.
First of all, Scott, we can, we can break this down. Is it legal what she doing?
Yes.
Okay, well, I ain't got nothing else to say because we know she doing it.
The statute provides, when any officer, employee of any county municipality is required to travel with performance of his duties, official duties, an officer or employee shall receive as expenses, it's twenty cents for each mile. And if it was amended, however the governing authorities can increase this mileage reimbursement rate of officers and employees as set by the state specific section, which actually relates back to the federal rate. So now that it's illegal, it's mandatory that you pay people mileage when they travel as part of their duties.
Okay, the, she's got sixty-six cents a mile and then she went to sixty-seven cents a mile.
What is mileage? I think it's about sixty-seven.
What did it change? It changed something. But sixty-seven cents. You said twenty cents a mile earlier.
Because the, because the board has adopted a policy that increases to the federal rate, which is either sixty-six or sixty-seven cents. That's the same as every other employee. Nine hundred and, with for a year's worth of travel.
Oh, yes.
Kevin, we got employees, we got people that go to the coast and stay in at the Boe Ravage and wanna get paid from the Boe Ravage to the convention center.
I just, well, this, this is unusual and in fact, it's a whole year's worth. Why we had to bring it up? Any more discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carried. I believe that's all between my folder and I really didn't have anything else. We covered it all during the meeting. Need a motion?
So moved.
To reset. Moved by Mr. Gaines. Second by Mr. Middleton. All in favor? Look at there.